Okay, welcome everyone. I'm calling to order the June 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Southborough Select Board. And the first item on our agenda is the annual presentation of the Town Scholarship Awards, which is always rewarding and a nice occasion for all of us. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the Scholarship Committee, Lisa Brascio.
Great, thank you. Oh geez, this is really loud. I'm loud anyway, but this is over loud. I want to welcome everybody. I'd first like to thank the Select Board once again for allowing us to do the awards of these presentations at a Select Board meeting, which I think is very special as the executives of the town. So, thank you, all of you, for letting us do this here. I think it's really important. I'd like to introduce first the Scholarship Committee. We have Christine Pearson, you can just wave your hand, Isabel Murphy, Stephanie Butler, Maria Vagnini could not be here today, it's her birthday, happy birthday Maria, and I'm Lisa Brascio. So, thank you all for coming tonight. I want to take a second and talk about a new scholarship we had this year, but first I want to introduce Stephanie Reneri's family. We have her daughter Cecilia, her son Chucky, her sister Maria, and her father. So, thank you all for coming tonight. So, as some of you know, Stephanie was a leader in our community. She did so many things behind the scenes for so many people. One of the things Stephanie loved most was everybody's kids. They were her kids. After Stephanie's passing, I had a lot of people reach out and wanting to know if we were going to do something, if the town was going to do something. And almost everybody had a story to tell about how wonderful Stephanie was, her sense of community and striving to make us all be better to want to be a part of it. My own son has a story. He had met Stephanie for the first time, I'll just share a quick little, kind of funny. Had met Stephanie for the first time, he was talking to her, telling he wanted to go to some concert, an Eminem concert. I said, "There's no way I'm going to that. I'm a little bit too old for that." Stephanie said, "You're a bad mom. I'm taking him. Don't worry about it." That was just Stephanie. It was, she cared about our community in so many ways, she did so many things for so many people. She was one of the most positive people I've ever met in my life. And we are so honored as Scholarship Committee to be able to honor her and honor her family with the legacy that is Stephanie. You know, Stephanie loved everything about Southborough and about this town, and this scholarship will do that. It will continue her legacy of greatness, and hopefully it will make us all be a little bit of better people. So, thank you for being here and thank you for that. So, before we get started, there's just a couple other little thank yous we want to do quickly. Katie Berry, would you mind coming up here? I'm going to turn the mic over to Isabel at this point.
Thank you. So, Katie, I'm not sure. We finally got around to letting people know how much we appreciate you and everything that you have done for us. So, I'd like to just give you a little bit of a update as to a letter that we asked to have put into your personnel file, if that's okay.
Thank you.
So, to Mr. Purple, "On behalf of the Southborough Scholarship Committee, we would like to express our sincere appreciation for all the outstanding support and assistance that Katie Berry has provided to us over the past few years. Katie has been an invaluable resource to our committee, demonstrating not only remarkable efficiency and attention to detail, but also a genuine enthusiasm for helping us fulfill our mission. Whether it's managing communication, assisting with administrative needs, or helping to coordinate our application and award processes, Katie approaches every task with professionalism, warmth, and a can-do attitude that has made a real difference in our work. Her responsiveness, organizational skills, and thoughtful insights have helped us to operate more smoothly and efficiently, allowing us to focus our efforts on selecting and supporting Southborough's deserving students. Quite simply, she goes above and beyond in every single way. We are incredibly fortunate to have someone of Katie's caliber working alongside us, and we wanted to be sure that her contributions were recognized and appreciated. Please join us in thanking her for her dedication and her excellence."
Don't step away yet. We are honored to have Representative Kate Donahue with us tonight, and Kate has something for you as well, Katie.
Wonderful. Thank you, congratulations. So, I have a citation for Katie, but before I read that, I just wanted to mention how much her welcoming voice makes a difference when I call the Town Hall. And just, we just chat for a few seconds, but it's much friendlier than some of the other people that I sometimes do. And it just brightens my day just a little to chat. So, I will read this quickly. "The House of Representatives. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Katie Berry in recognition of your dedication to enhancing the education of Southborough residents through your work with the Scholarship Committee and for your service to the community. And it's given this third day of June at the State House by Ron Mariano, signed by the Speaker of the House and by me. Congratulations."
Thank you, Kate. Vanessa took pictures. Thank you very much. Before we move on, I have just one more quick thank you. I'm not going to say a whole lot because this person does a lot of things behind the scenes, and she doesn't necessarily want to be recognized for doing it. So, Kathy, would you mind coming up here, please? So, the last couple years, it's been tough getting donations and everything for the scholarships, and Kathy has been instrumental to helping us fulfill our charge and our mission. So, we I know you wish I hadn't done this, but I'm just going to keep it short and just say she does so much, not just for us, but so many groups behind the scenes, she helps them. So, that being said, we're going to bring Kate up one more time.
I'll be getting a lot of pictures. So, we're doing these beautiful flowers. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I don't know if it skips on the border of my stuff, offers its sincerest congratulations to Catherine Cook, should be Kathleen, but we want Catherine.
No, it's Catherine.
No, no, it's just a little bit of a joke with my name being Kathleen. It was a very, obviously a very rude joke. In recognition to Catherine Cook, in recognition of your dedication to advancing the education of Southborough residents through your work with the Scholarship Committee and for your service to the community. Signed once again by Speaker of the House Ron Mariano and by me, Kate Donahue. Get both with the flowers and everything. Congratulations.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, with that, we're going to turn it over to the Select Board Chair, Mr. Dennington, to start the process. Thank you.
Okay, so our first recipients of the Stephanie Reneri Scholarship is Margaret Jane Fitzgerald.
Why don't we have her come up?
So, it's a profound honor to be here tonight to present the inaugural Stephanie Reneri Scholarship. This scholarship is newly founded in memory of Stephanie, a beloved Southborough mom, a proud Algonquin Regional High School graduate herself, and a woman who is deeply committed to the simple yet powerful idea of doing good in the world. Tonight, we celebrate Stephanie's spirit by awarding this first scholarship to an exceptionally deserving Algonquin senior, Margaret Jane Fitzgerald. Margaret is graduating with an exemplary academic record, having challenged herself with a rigorous course load that includes AP Environmental Science, AP Spanish, AP Geography, AP Language and Composition, AP World History, and AP US Government and Politics. Her achievements in the classroom are clearly outstanding, but it is Margaret's vision for her future so beautifully articulated in her scholarship essay that truly resonates with the essence of this award. She shared her aspiration to pursue a career in international relations and diplomacy, inspired by the quiet yet powerful work of those who diffuse conflict, broker peace, and build bridges between communities. This ambition is already taking shape. Margaret has been accepted into an accelerated bachelor's program at American University, where she will have the incredible opportunity to graduate in three years while studying abroad in Brussels, Madrid, and Nairobi. Following her undergraduate studies, she plans to volunteer with the Peace Corps. In her words, "She is looking forward to the opportunity to immerse herself in another culture, build relationships with local communities, and contribute to grassroots development efforts." Margaret's ultimate goal, she tells us, is to improve lives by promoting peace, understanding, and sustainable progress. Those are not just words, they reflect a deep commitment we've seen echoed by those who know her best. Her high school English teacher, Emily Philbin, describes Margaret as "a burst of compassion, empathy, enthusiasm, maturity, and intelligence," adding that she possesses "a quirky sense of humor and a genuine desire to assist those around her in reaching their true potential." Similarly, Ms. Philbin shared that Margaret sees the good in people and even recognizes when a hand is needed, which she will certainly lend. Margaret, your dedication to academic excellence, your ambitions and compassionate goals, and your inherent drive to uplift others make you an incredibly fitting recipient of this scholarship. You embody the very spirit of doing good that Stephanie Reneri championed. It's with great pleasure and admiration that we award you the first Stephanie Reneri Scholarship to Margaret Fitzgerald. We're very proud of you and excited to see all that you will accomplish. Okay, congratulations. That's a very moving piece of paper. So, congratulations.
Okay, well, I'm not too
Congratulations, Margaret. That's, I'm exhausted just from hearing what you're doing. I know, said that I spent some time in DC and I liked it in my volunteer work, and I think you know, kind of lost some time there. It's an remarkable place to spend some time. And American University is great. We can do it all in three years. So, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Margaret Fitzgerald, in recognition of receiving a 2025 scholarship and for your outstanding academics, community service, and commitment to excellence in the community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mom, did you want to get a picture of this? Or you're all set? Okay, one more, one more, one more photo.
When I'm in practice, I never know how much time I spend.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
This is scholarship number three, Alexis Ellis. Alexis isn't with us tonight, and Stephanie Butler will be accepting on behalf of Alexis. Is she here?
No, she's not here, so Stephanie's going to accept on her behalf. So, we'll give this, you can still give this to Stephanie, Margaret.
Okay, and Stephanie is where?
Right here. But no pictures, please, she says.
I am so down with that, trust me. Okay, Alexis Ellis. The Southborough Town Scholarship is awarded to students who demonstrate excellence in academics, work, and volunteer experience, and extracurricular involvement. Alexis Ellis exemplifies all of these qualities and more. According to her school counselor, Alexis is incredibly diligent and manages to stay at the top of her class while maintaining a demanding schedule. Her counselor believes she will succeed in any future endeavor she pursues, describing her as "consistent, hardworking, innately curious, and driven to achieve her goals." Throughout high school, Alexis was actively involved in extracurricular activities. She participated for four years on the first robotics team, the principal's leadership team, and the math team. In addition, she was a member of the girls' varsity basketball team and the National Honor Society, through which she volunteered at various community events. In addition to her academic and extracurricular commitments, Alexis gained valuable work experience. She held positions in retail, worked as an IT co-op technician, and completed an internship at Framingham State University. She also gave back to her community by volunteering at senior centers, helping residents with technology-related issues. This year, Alexis took the initiative to complete an EMT course outside of school. Deeply interested in the medical field, she pursued the course to gain hands-on experience. Alexis will attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she plans to study engineering with a minor in biology. She also hopes to study abroad in a Hispanic country to learn more about its culture and language. Congratulations.
Thank you. She's not here, Kate. Thank you. Thank you, I accept that for Alexis.
Is Gabriella here?
Yep, right here.
Come on, Gabriella. So, this is going to be the second Stephanie scholarship, and I'm so glad to be able to do this one. To her family, thank you for coming tonight. I've heard wonderful things about your mother, your sister, your daughter, from Lisa, from Dave, just a lot of people who have said what a great human being she was. I didn't know her, but it sounds like she, horrible tragedy, but it sounds like in the 51 years or so that she lived, that she really had a great life and affected a whole lot of people. So, I'm glad that we're able to do this tonight for her and her memory. Okay, so Gabriella, Gabriella plans to attend the Mount St. Mary's College to study health science and play Division I rugby. Being captain of the rugby team has taught her lessons about leadership and pushing through challenges. Gabriella has shined in overcoming those challenges in a positive manner to excel at all she does while working at Starbucks and keeping an impressive 3.69 GPA. Her guidance counselor caused her a role model and was impressed with her work ethic in the classroom and on the field. Gabriella credits her work ethic and an appreciation for hard work to her parents. Are your parents here tonight?
Hi, Dallas.
Okay, hello. The example that they set has helped me to become the person I am today, Dad. So, you hear that? Even with such a busy schedule, Gabriella has found time to contribute to her community by volunteering to babysit at town meetings so parents can participate. For four years, she organized a voluntary cleanup of litter, and for two years, read to children in elementary schools. She was also the assistant manager at the Skyrise Theater for four years. You're busy. Gabriella wants to help people from all backgrounds feel better and live a healthier life, especially those who don't always have access to good care or a healthy food, and she wants to change the access that struggling families have to resources. She would love to work on a hospital or have her own practice someday. Going to college was always a dream of hers, and we're so proud that the Stephanie Reneri Scholarship will help contribute to that dream, which Stephanie would have loved and be so proud to support. Gabriella, continue to reach for the stars, and best of luck, we will be rooting for you. And then, hold on, I want to say I've got more. So, that's what I had to read, right?
Yep.
So, now, I'm going to go scribble a little bit. So, I read your letter, I just want you to know. And I want to say the volunteer, and I hope you remember this down the road. First of all, it gave me chills, made me cry. Those that have to work harder than other people, in the end, are going to be better off for it. They're going to have learned how to work hard, which is what an employer wants. I went to school with people who never had to open a book, right? And, you know, they kind of make you mad, and you think life is unfair when you have to work harder. So, you'll, in the end, be better off for this. You'll be the one that gets hired and will be able to be successful at work because you know how to work already. So, that in itself is a huge accomplishment. So, you just remember that when you're working late at night at college and you've got a roommate that doesn't have to study because whatever, you're still going to be the one that the employee's going to want to hire and keep. So, congratulations. It looks like you are going to just shine. Okay?
Do you want to come up, Kathy? You can just, yeah, you can just open it up. It's just a certificate. You don't have to read it. The check is in there too, so. You're just going to stand there and you get pictures, and you can present it for and then Kate's going to come up, Kathy stays, so we can get a picture of the three of you.
I don't know. Oh, wait, she didn't brought us across. We could play off-kid tonight. He's very impressive, and he's very impressed that you're captain of the rugby team. That was, the squad head was very scary to me. So, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts recognizes Gabriella Muto in recognition of receiving a 2025 Southborough Scholarship Award and for your outstanding academics, community service, and commitment to excellence in the community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Maya Regan, you want to come up front? This is for the Carol Harris Scholarship. The Carol Harris Scholarship is awarded to students who excel in academics, service the town of Southborough, and demonstrate this through participation in gymnastics and/or plan on majoring in education, physical education, or recreation. Maya Regan exemplifies all these areas with a focus on inspiring younger students to reach for their personal best as well. Simply put, Maya is truly one of our best and brightest, a direct quote from her guidance counselor, Linda Hutchins. For 13 years, Maya has competed competitively in gymnastics. She was a four-year member of Algonquin's varsity team and co-captain for one year. Maya has dedicated countless hours of her time to school activities. She was a member of DECA and rose to a leadership position where her responsibilities were to guide meetings and advise new members. Maya consistently helped fellow students by volunteering in the writing center and being a peer leader to incoming freshmen. Maya's community service and volunteerism shows her great work ethic and compassionate character. Maya was also a Girl Scout member for 13 years, achieving the Bronze Award. In each year of Algonquin High School, she volunteered for the food pantry and assisted judges for the yearly MIAA and USAG meets. All this while she maintained an extremely rigorous course load, worked at the Southborough Library, and is currently employed at Dairy Queen. She will be attending New York University, majoring in nursing.
All right, Kate.
Maya, congratulations. I just have one question. Do you have to be Southborough or Westborough? I just, people come up to ice cream, I like it. I'm a big fan of the PK my size. Can you hear that? No, but Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Maya Regan in recognition of receiving a 2025 Southborough Scholarship and for your outstanding academic, community service, and commitment to excellence in the community. Congratulations.
Okay, Joseph Truman. Oh, excellent, you're here. Hello, I have plans for you. The Linda Hubley Memorial Scholarship is awarded to a student who demonstrates commitment to their community through volunteerism, environmental protection, and ongoing education in these areas. This year's recipient is a personification of these goals. Joseph Truman has completed his first year at UMass Lowell, and he is studying civil engineering with a goal of planning and designing new buildings, roads, and infrastructure projects to make a positive difference in today's world. Joe is a lifeguard and a swim instructor, and he also earned the rank of Eagle Scout through volunteerism and dedication. And on a very personal note, if you have some time this summer, we have an open position on the Wastewater Study Commission. We have several civil engineers on it, and I think we would love to have you join us, even for the summer, and give us the benefit of your wisdom and help us. So, I told you I was going to put you on.
All right, come on up, Kate.
Well, I appreciate you inviting Joseph to the committee, and now I've seen Southborough actually probably lead the way in having those type of people serve on town boards. I mean, you know, people in Southborough have done that. Thanks for the encouragement and thought this way of working. So, congratulations. It's UMass, I was there for two years. It was a great place. We learned a lot, had a lot of fun, and it's very positive factor. At least it used to be. I don't know if my parents today are going to be telling me something different. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Joseph Truman in recognition of receiving a 2025 Southborough Scholarship and for your outstanding academics, community service, and commitment to excellence in the community. Congratulations.
Great, thank you, everyone. Andrew, thank you for allowing us to do this here. And if we could have all the families, we're going to go outside to the front of the building. we're going to go outside to the front of the building, and we're going to take some pictures. And obviously, we'd love to...
I just want to also thank you and all the members of the scholarship committee, Isabel, Maria, Christine, and Stephanie. I think you also deserve a round of applause for all the work that you've done.
Thank you. And Kate, if you would come out with us as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Maybe we'll take five minutes just to recess, let everyone leave. So, the next item on the agenda is public comment. And this is for items, we definitely will talk, we'll have public comment on the items on the agenda, including the Niri issue. So if anyone has a public comment they wish to speak to on an item that's not on the agenda, this is not intended as a discussion item or back and forth. We try to limit it to three minutes. I don't know if there's anyone here or online that wishes to speak under public comment. I don't have my computer, so I don't see. Okay, so, seeing no hands raised. Sorry. Okay, so then with... You can hear the first floor up from the side. All right. So, first item under Chair's report is an update on our one-stop applications. And for here, for the most completely up-to-date information as of 6:00 PM Tuesday, I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa.
Thank you. I don't know if Mr. Hamilton wants to talk first about... Okay. Okay, thank you. So, as of now, the deadline is tomorrow at 11:59 PM. We are submitting the regional application with Westboro and Northboro, which is being submitted on their end by staff in Westboro. So Leah Emerson has been working very hard on that one. Mr. Dennington and Leah and I have also been working on the wayfinding application for place-making and wayfinding around our historic center. We're polishing that off between tonight and tomorrow morning and getting that one submitted. The third one will be the Route Nine wastewater treatment application. So, we are just about ready to submit that. I received some documents just in the last half an hour that we were waiting for today. The committee has done great work with Weston and Sampson, who've been, you know, the committee expertise has been tremendous, as well as the assistance from Weston and Sampson. So that one will be going in, I believe, tonight.
There was a fourth application for the downtown wastewater, and the committee felt that we're going to wait and possibly fund that at a fall town meeting, because it included a hefty piece of zoning, and we had not had time to really vet that with planning and EDC. And so, we decided to hold off on that one.
So I hope everyone appreciates these. These are pretty big applications. They have involved a lot of work. And I know, we also got letters of support from Senator Eldridge and Representative Dunnehugh. I know definitely on the wastewater...
Yes.
...application, so. And, you know, we've all done a lot of work over the last couple of days on these, so I hope everyone appreciates that. You know, I know this has become an increasingly competitive program, as I've heard, so I, my expectations are in the right place. I feel like this is almost like a baseball, kind of, begin in the spring with hope, and then sometimes in the fall, it ends with a little bit of disappointment. But I'm hopeful, and my fingers are crossed, and it would be great if we could get one of these grants.
Yeah, I'd like to also just acknowledge Bill DePietre and Dave Ferris, who provided letters of support for the wastewater. So we, you know, we've gotten...
Excellent.
...community support from the major players along Route Nine.
And Al, I think, I know that I put in one of these letters. I'm glad you researched this fact. And I hope it is accurate, but I think it is, that we are the only community on Route Nine between Goshen and Boston that does not have access to municipal wastewater.
That is true.
I've been, I traveled virtually along Route Nine, and every community on it, if you go to their website and say, "Look for sewers or wastewater," they got sewers and wastewater.
But did you emphasize that in the grant?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And in the letter, there's a, this is stylistically, I try to avoid single-sentence paragraphs, but I think there might be a single-sentence.
And Vanessa, thank you for everything you've done all these last years. I know this is hard to get these things in and on time, so. And you don't need signatures from anybody. Nope, it's all digital. We have uploaded our letters of support, and we're just polishing off some of that to submit between this evening and tomorrow morning. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so there's one administrative logistical thing that's not on the agenda, but I just, there's no harm in talking about it now. Jesse Stein sent us an email on behalf of the Affordable Housing... Now, if I can get the new name wrong, the new name right. Yes, it's about the housing production. Affordable Housing Trust about the housing production plan, need to update it. And I think this requires a joint meeting between the select board and the planning board about this. So they were looking for June, Monday, July 15th, I think is probably a regular planning board meeting. And he asked whether we could have a quorum at that meeting. I assume you can attend remotely if you want for something like that. Now, I think for July, we set our schedule so that we just have one meeting in July scheduled on the second. We have two. Okay, the first and the 15th. But isn't the 15th a Monday?
It's 11th, I think, is what he, I thought he asked for.
Okay, okay, let me get this correct. I think I might have been wrong when I just said about... I think they want to meet on the Monday, right? Okay. Here it is. I'm sorry. July 14.
That is a Monday.
Yeah. So, I mean, we could also, we could just move, slide, our July 15 meeting to July 14. Is that something that would work?
The planning board's going to be meeting that night, too, so we'd have to go someplace else.
I would recommend, why don't we just either meet virtually or in person?
And the purpose is, what, just to approve it? Vote to approve it?
I don't know. Reading between the lines, I think it must be a requirement. So, and it doesn't make sense to have separate meetings about it. So, I guess the issue is, do we want to meet on Monday, the 14th, and then meet again on Tuesday, the 15th? Or do we want to just move our Tuesday, July 15 meeting to... Tuesday, July 15 to Monday, July 14?
So why don't we just zoom in on the 14th? That's what I think Al's saying, on the 14th. And listen and do, you know, we...
Okay. I'm fine with that, too.
We'll vote remotely if we have to, and then do our normal 15th.
Yes, Carl's got a...
She's going to talk about enter, terminal transfers and reserve fund transfers.
I put another thing on the calendar.
Yes, reserve fund transfers. They were talking about having, trying to coordinate a meeting, a joint meeting with advisory.
What did they suggest?
Andrew said he could make it. He wasn't sure on advisory, the rest of advisory.
Yeah, InterFaff was all in on a joint meeting with the select board on the 15th, but he was trying to make sure he's going to have a quorum.
Right, just to add a wrinkle, sorry.
That's right.
Okay. I've started to lose track of the logistics of this, maybe... Yeah, yeah. Well, okay. So we can get, a quorum of us can participate remotely on the 14th. Okay. All right. That's all I've got under Chair's report.
Am I next?
Yeah.
So, I'm holding this up to the camera. Youth and Family Services says, this should be in everybody's mailbox. Hopefully, everybody's gotten this. This is the community-wide survey. They're trying to get a really big participation number with that they're going to use to understand what people in Southborough need. Community needs assessment, so it's in your mailbox. They've tried to make it easy. You can log on, you've got a QR code you could use. So, my job tonight was to hold it up so everybody sees what they're looking for, and hopefully sell it in their mailbox. So we can get, we hope, a really good response that they can use then to figure out what people in this town need and want. Okay?
Mark?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. I believe last meeting, Ms. Cook wanted an update. No, take your word. So we had the Battle of the Burrows after the last meeting. And so, representatives from Northboro, Southboro, Marlboro, and Westboro attended the game. Southboro was very well represented. We had the Trotter Band. We had members of the scholarship committee who were the recipients. If people bought tickets using the QR code online, some money went to the Southboro Scholarship Committee from the Woo Sox. Still waiting to find out who actually won based on how much money was raised. But it was, it was a very good night, again, very well representative. Select Chair, Dennington, you know, did a nice job throwing out the first pitch. They separated out the first pitches this year, so everybody got their own.
How nice of a job did he do?
So he got it to home plate. He got it to home plate. I...
No, it was a bouncy ball.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think he was, I think...
Did mine bounce last year?
No. No, it did not. And you were very pleased with that because you had some concerned people that thought you might not, may not get it there. But, nope, did fine. And like I said, it was a very good night. Good night for Southboro. We actually even had a couple of our firefighters, Captain Dana...
Dana was here.
And Captain Dana and firefighter Rice participated in the color guard. I know Chief Pontini has been working on putting our own color guard together, but we participated along with Westboro, and it was, it was a really nice evening. And so, I think people are excited to participate again next year. The only other item, I just want to do a little public service announcement for CPC. Community Preservation is doing their annual public forum Wednesday, June 18th at 7:00 over Public Safety. They are going to have a hybrid meeting, so Zoom is available. So people can understand what CPA is doing about the application process, timeline, and if people have ideas.
What did you say? What did you say, Vanessa? It's not June, he's right.
All the kudos you just got for all the nice things you did. So, again, Wednesday, June 18th, 7:00, Public Safety. People who are interested in submitting applications for the next round, you know, should come and attend. If you have any questions, Lisa Braccio is the new chair. Feel free to reach out to her in advance or following that meeting. Just wanted to put that out there so people were aware. But that was all sent out, all boards, committees. And we've done a nice job getting that out on social media as well.
Mark, on the Woo Sox, were there cats there?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Actually, that was the whole purpose of bringing that up. Yes, there were cats. There were people sitting there with cats in blankets. I saw cats on leashes. There were cats in these clear backpack environments. And it was not the chaos that you might have expected it could have been. So, I saw a lot of comments online afterwards that, you know, that went better than it was expected to. So, I think it's something they'll probably do again, but it was just very weird to see, you know, people walking along with a cat, you know, on their way to get pizza. You know, it's just a little jarring, but it was all fine.
No.
Okay. Sure, just going to move to the consent agenda then and see if there are any holds on the consent agenda.
Yes, A, I got a couple minute changes, minor, really minor.
E?
And then, Mark, on the liquor license application, is there an issue about what date it's for? Or that's good to go?
I think it's, I think it is good to go. They, the license is for, for June 21st. They did ask for a rain date of the 28th. Up to the board as to whether you want to make that a condition. And, you know, and if you do, I would suggest that you at least, you give me the authority to reissue the license for the 28th so that you don't have to do a special meeting in order to address that again.
Okay, so then maybe I will hold that and...
Okay.
So we held A, E, and G, right? Okay. So I moved that the board approved consent agenda items B, C, D, and F.
Second.
All of those in favor? Okay. Kathy?
I even hate to do this. Bridget, you did another great job in the minutes, so this is really picky. Okay, so line 78, Kelly Conklin, she lives at 17 Sadie. It's Hut, not Huts, H-U-T-T. And then, line 120, Jean, it's G-E-N-E. It is G-E-N-E. Okay, so Jean's last name is not Carmela, it's Carmelik. And it is spelled, Jean, where'd it go? Okay. And that's it, those two little minor things.
I have one here as well.
I have one here as well. Line one-twenty-nine, just make mention of the spreadsheet that I shared, which is NEARI Building Options Comparison. I had also shared and linked that to the packet or the minutes.
Where? Is that Tim?
Uh, just at one-twenty-nine, when we deliberated, just make mention that I shared this comparison matrix, and then just include it in the documents to the meeting.
No, he wants it added. He wants it sent as added.
There's nothing there.
Yeah, there's nothing there. Just, I shared something then, and I wanted to make sure that it was in the shared items.
Okay. Are you still minutes?
Yes. I have just one thing. Mary Tinti's last name, Bridgette, there's no way you could know this, is T-I-N-T-I. That's line seventy-one, and it's another, it appears another time. Tori Gamal on line eighty-seven is G-A-M-M-A-L. And Eric, how do you spell your last name?
D-L-A-Z-E-R.
Is it S or Z?
Z.
Oh, G-L-A-Z-E-R.
Oh, it is S, okay.
So, it's right. Okay. That's it.
Okay. I move that we approve the open session meeting minutes from May twenty, twenty, twenty-five as amended. All those in favor? Okay, and
E?
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a silly question, really. These are transfers within the department, correct?
So far.
Well, we have the boss here, so.
Yes, they're within the department. We vote two lines at town meeting, salary and non-salary.
We only vote one line.
Well, it's in the warrant, the warrant is listed as salary and non-salary. So, this is something we do annually, an annual vote.
I would suggest that in the future, we just vote one line and then let managers manage.
We have to vote two. It's mass general law.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. I wish, I wish it was different. But yes, there, it's within, within the budgets. Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I move that we approve consent agenda item E.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And then, for the one-day liquor license, this is for, what date again? The rain date is what?
Twenty-first, twenty-first is the date, and then twenty-eighth is the rain date.
The rain date that, that was requested was June twenty-eighth. Current license that you will sign tonight, if approved, is for the twenty-first. What I was suggesting is if you don't want to have to meet again, that you can authorize me to reissue this for the twenty-eighth, should the twenty-first get rained out.
Good idea.
So, let's see if I get this right. I move that the board approve the one-day liquor license for Kinder Group with the condition that the town administrator has the authority to issue a license for a rain date of June twenty-eighth, if that becomes necessary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
So, I think that takes care of the consent agenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, the next item on the agenda is a continued discussion of next steps for NEARI and a committee charge. So, just as background, the last time we talked about this at the last meeting, that was the first meeting of the select board after the town meeting vote, and we had a lengthy discussion at that time. I think it was about two hours long. And I felt, you know, sometimes it's helpful when you're preparing for this meeting, review the minutes of the last meeting, and this did confirm. It did seem like there was a consensus that we should, or this board should keep up the discussion about how to address the building needs for our K through eight schools, and that the community wanted options, and there seemed to be a consensus to have a new charge for a, a newer revised committee. What that would look like was kind of up for future discussion. So, what I'm hoping we can do is first have a discussion among the board about this, then open it up for public comment. Hopefully, we can kind of keep this discussion to within, you know, forty-five minutes or an hour. And I think the two related topics are, one, the committee charge, and two is where we stand with an MSBA process. And the reason that I mentioned that is because I understand that the, there are certain parts of a committee charge where if you were to take out the language in the current charge of the NEARI Building Committee, you would effectively end, you, you, you could breach a contract that the town has with MSBA. And I, I know I certainly heard the message at the town meeting. I don't think that there's, there's any sufficient community support for the so-called Plan A, if that's a term to use. So, but I know something we talked about, and we've certainly heard from people about, is whether in a revised committee charge, you know, that, that should still be on the kind of decision matrix, for lack of a better term, right? As one of the options that's seen as an option. And so, just to begin and kind of frame the discussion, I put together a draft charge after listening to a bunch of different people, and I really, it's just kind of a starting point for discussion. So, with that, I think I might just begin the discussion with the board, and, you know, do you, are there any other things, aspects to this? Do you think that we should talk about that I didn't mention, and maybe, you know, if we just start at the end and move down? So, Al, what are your thoughts on this topic?
I'm gonna listen for a while.
Okay. Tim, what are your thoughts on this topic?
We've heard loud and clear that we need to have the town make the decision, or help make the decision as we move forward. So, I, whatever we end up doing with the charge, I want it to be clear and concise and straightforward, factual-based, and try to keep opinions on of it. I read through the charge that you sent over as a draft, and I, I saw a revision to it, or a number of revisions, I should say, that kind of mimic more of what I just said about more of a fact-based finding. And that was the draft that I sent back as an alternate place to start, so I'd like to maybe consider that as another alternate place to start with the rubric and everything mentioned in that comparison format. But I really think that we need to just put facts on paper, start with that, and then take a pause and look at it before we really make a hard decision.
Kathy?
I was gonna do what Al did. I was gonna listen and then comment. So, can you two, Marguerite, go and then come back? But I think Tim's gotta flesh out more of what he's talking about, too, because I'm not su, I haven't read whatever you put together. So, I'm not sure what's there.
It's also helpful. I can explain, like, what are some of the premises that went behind this draft charge and what it, and what it says, right?
Yeah. I don't have a real big issue with what I'm reading here, except for the one, there's a typo, but other than that.
I apologize.
Um, that's okay. But that's, I mean, who cares about a typo? So, Marguerite, why don't you go?
I second that it'd be nice to start solving the problem sooner rather than later. My only question was, can you explain to me why F is still here under, did you explain that you need to have F New Four Grade School at NEARI Building Site in as part of the charge in order to continue the, I'm not
I, I believe so, and I also think that the current list of the ex officio members of this is something that is dictated by MSBA. Now, I understand that by having this language there, that doesn't even necessarily mean that all of those people have to show up to a meeting of this committee, but just there is some magic between including the names of those people in the charge or not. But, so basically, the new name of this committee would be a K through eight school building committee. It would be an ad hoc committee that's appointed by the select board. And the charge, instead of working with the MSBA to come up with an MSBA-compliant project that is voted on at town meeting, this is something I think very different, which is, first off, much shorter term. It's through the end of
September.
Calendar year twenty-twenty-five, and it's to discuss the options. This is based on, Tim, you know, your idea of a matrix. It doesn't have as many of the options. I mean, the, the A, B, C, D, E, F, that it charges the committee with summarizing the, the costs and the pros and cons are, one, what would be the capital projects needed to keep NEARI open and safe for a five-to-ten-year window? B, what would it cost and what would be the pros and cons to doing a base repair to the existing building to bring it up to full code and safety compliance? And Kathy, I know you can speak to this. A lot of this, these, the details of these were already, there's work product of the NBC that's kind of a starting point for this continued discussion. The other is moving grade five to Trotter and expanding the Finn or Woodward School to add an additional grade. The other is adding space at the Woodward and Finn Schools so that Finn could accommodate K one and two, and Woodward can accommodate three, four, and five. The other is renovate or new construction at the Finn Site to accommodate a four-grade school, K through three, with the remaining grades at Woodward. And the other is a new four-grade school at the NEARI Building Site. But it says, committee's not limited to presenting just those options, can present any feasible option identified as part of their study, and, and calls on the committee to present its analysis to the, to the community by September. I think that may be a little bit ambitious. But then, you know, the object of that, and this is something that's kind of a little outside the box, but, you know, people who are, who have been on different sides of this have all kind of suggested this, is to use the committee's work as some type of a basis for either at, at a fall town meeting or another public forum, or some combination of those, to have kind of the same, a debate you had like you had at the, at the annual, no, I'm sorry, the special town meeting on May tenth, except with the possibility for people to rank, there wouldn't just be one thing. It wouldn't just be one yes or no. So, if I don't like that, that's it. It's help us, help us understand of these different options, what enjoys the broadest possible support. And then, this is something you wouldn't necessarily need to do, but I think, and I'm curious what everyone thinks. Here is, is there a consensus that there's enough people who are interested in working on this? We, we have heard from people who were not for this project but are committed to finding an alternative that has, you know, better public support, and then that is kind of the building block for kind of whatever happens next. And I'm also conscious here of, you know, there's some ultimate, there, there are some decisions here, particularly about grade configuration, that are not within, that are really the responsibility of the school committee. This is kind of advisory work. It's not work that the NBC was doing a build, you know, building up an article to bring to a special town meeting and end with, you know, a, a lot of money at stake, have an up or down vote. It's just have some work product that you, you then use for, and it could be a ranked choice vote. A lot of people have suggested that. There'd be a lot of details about how, how you would work that out at, at a fall town meeting, right? How to structure that. So, that's the idea behind the charge. And then, the, the part, in terms of the membership, the part of it that I think would try to keep some of the knowledge, built-up knowledge of the committee, is there would still be at least one school committee member, select board member, advisory committee member, capital improvement planning committee member, and then residents at large. I think there seems to be a consensus that, you know, those at-large positions should also, for people who didn't support the last project but have come forward with other ideas, that would be, you know, we, we should seriously consider those candidates. Again, a preference for people who've got experience in architecture, engineering, construction. That language, aspirational language was in the last charge. I also think, as we have had, heard from some people who are teachers, and, you know, I, I agree the comment that someone made about, you know, the layout of buildings, you know, you could really benefit from the benefit of someone who is a teacher, and particularly in the last five, ten years has done that could really help. So, that was kind of the thinking behind this language. And Tim, you know, I looked at what you had put together, and this, I mean, they seemed conceptually very similar. I know that you have more, like in the list of A, B, C, D, E, F, I think there's more things there. So, I'm, I'm open, you know, to considering that.
Are we gonna try to vote on this tonight?
Well, I, I, I would like to see if we can approve a committee charge tonight, because the benefit of doing that is then we could roll as soon as June seventeenth, we could start entertaining applications for this, and then start appointing people. And because July is gonna be here sooner than you know it, and then, you know, then we're gonna lose traction in the summer if we don't.
Can I answer Marguerite's question, though, that she, she asked, as far as why F is still here? We don't know what these other choices are gonna cost. The NEARI Building Committee did cost out some of these, but it was a very broad level costing, and then it got more and more and more specific, and we really rolled up our sleeves and actually hired outside estimators at the end for the last three. But the first twelve, we had the architects actually do the estimate based on square footage. And that, that is a way to do it, but it's a very general way to do it. So, my thinking is, and, you know, let's try to get Tim's ideas in here so we get one that we can all agree on, is that we're trying to get a project that we think we can get two-thirds of vote on, and no one knows what that is at this point. The, the proponents of Plan B didn't cost that out, so there was nothing to really compare it to. So, if Plan B theoretically costs more than Plan A, I don't think Plan B would necessarily have the support that it seemed to have. So, we've got to have the stuff truly costed out so we can compare apples to apples. If truly the cost is the driving force of this project, and we want to try to solve the problem at the least cost, then we've got to go through the effort of looking at all the choices. I think you can probably add a new two-year school, or two-grade school to this one, too, as far as another choice here. But that's why it's still there, because I don't know why you'd throw it away yet until you really had the cost of the other ones to really line them up and see what the costs are. Do you agree with that? I mean, I mean, it's thirty-five million dollars of state money, and you just don't have to do anything yet, so why do it till you've gone through the work and had all these projects costed in a similar way, so we really think we know what the most expensive one is, what the least expensive one, and the ones that really do solve what I'll just call the NEARI problem.
Al?
Um, I guess I have a completely different view. Big surprise. First, I think we ought to figure out how much we could spend, rather than, you know, we've been price takers, and I think now we need to be price setters. This is what we can afford. This is, and, you know, there is a number, there's a number for the short term, and if you, there's a number for the longer term, more structural solutions. And, you know, I, I just recently built an addition on my house, and I didn't engage the architect until first my wife and I sat down and figured out how much we could spend on this, and then we worked with the architect to fit it in the budget. And so, I, I think we've made this mistake in the past where, you know, we, we simply, we turn our checkbook over to the architects. And no disrespect to what was done in, in the NEARI Building Committee, but when you turn your checkbook over to the architects, you're going to get a certain result. And so, you know, I think we need to establish what the budget is. And, you know, if there's a budget that says, you know, you're going, if we're going to do sort of base repairs to, to NEARI and then press forward, there's some number of millions of dollars. It's not gonna be free. And if it's something more that involves a three-school configuration and a longer-term solution, it's some number of millions of dollars. But I think the committees ought to be tasked with a budget, a budget target. Always come back if they can't do it, but I think the, the first thing we need to say is, because I, you know, the voters said very clearly, you know, that Plan A was way too expensive, you know, that it was unaffordable. And so, I think before we charge a committee, we need to have a dollar number next to essentially two broad categories and say, you know, and say, you know, this is, this is your budget, this is what we think the town can afford. And what you need to do is, is come up with a plan that fits that budget. And if for some reason you can't come up with a plan to fit that budget, what that's saying to you is one of two things, either that's not a realistic plan, or alternately, you know, we gotta swallow hard and say, if we really want this, we gotta do something more. But we ought to have a target budget for each of the, for each of these broad categories. The second thing, 11 is a big committee, and, you know, that...
I, I, I don't know.
I, I'm not, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
It is, and I hear your concern on that, but in this case, I think it may, this one time it might be warranted. I don't like 11 either, I don't like nine. Five's my favorite, but I think you've got to have more than five to do, the work that's gotta be done here. We were stretched pretty thin with seven, to try to get everything we had to get done, done.
Okay, just to your point, I don't think that we turned over the check, ultimately, the checkbook is held by town meeting, right? I think the idea behind this charge isn't even necessarily to, this is kind of an interim phase of just getting a sense from people about filling in the, you know, that, that matrix that Tim was talking about. These are the pros, these are the cons. And that also includes not just numbers, but also, you know, educational benefits that are harder to quantify. And I know, I, I mean, I, I have a, you know, stake in this, you know, based on the age of my kids and everything, but at this point, I'm not really, I'm kind of agnostic about what the ultimate outcome is, other than that if, the way our system works, it needs to be something that gets two-thirds support of a town meeting, right? And I don't know, as Kathy said, I don't know what that is right now, other than to go through some process where, of providing information and then listening, and, and then taking something to a fall town meeting where ultimately, you know, the checkbook is in the hands of town meeting.
Well, you're gonna have to spend money just to get to that point.
Yeah, I agree.
And...
And we've got to figure where that money's gonna come from. But I, I agree with you, if you were building a personal house, you would say, architect, I've got $200,000 to spend, whatever I want to do. And they would, they would listen to you. We did that this time. Go look at the meeting, it means with Andrew Favre and I, and so, we gave them a number, and they basically said impossible. Because the way the, the construction costs have skyrocketed here, you can't do it. So we would pound and pound and pound, we'd say, we want the first number to be four, or three. And, I mean, I can remember what Jim said to me, impossible, you can't do it. So we tried to start with that and got nowhere with that. I don't know what, how you come up with the process of saying what's affordable, because there's a subjectivity in that. So you'd have to decide what that process is to come up with that number. But it still sounds to me like you're backing into it. So if we would go through the process of coming up with seven different choices here, cost them out, see what they are, and then if they look, if, if you at that point think that they are all unaffordable, then, you know, we'll have to do something else. But I just, I just don't think you can say, here's the number, and try to fit it in, because we tried to do that and it didn't work. I wish we could have, I mean, believe me, we tried really hard to say, this is way too much, there's gotta be a way to do it. Can we go out to someone else, have them build it and buy it from us, so we don't have to be stuck with these rules in Massachusetts that cost, make it cost so much more? And none of it, none of it took, so.
Well, I think, Al, if we do what you're doing, then, I mean, we're not, first off, you need to figure out what that number is. And so that's, you know, this would not get done, obviously, tonight. But I guess, in terms of the discussion, I don't know whether this draft charge is one where if, if you have, if people have language they would change, subtract, add to, so that this would be a base of something that we could vote on tonight or not? So I think that's something we should talk about. Yes?
Share my screen here, that might be a good next step from my perspective anyway.
So then, I think, for what you had, what are the most important?
That's, that's why I want to do it this way, if I can. So let me see if I can get control here for a second.
I know it's time for audience input, but can I just know that it's pre-K that you want to be focusing on?
That's a good point, thank you.
Okay, so it's kind of hard to see on the screen, so I apologize for that, trying to read it here side by side. But I was gonna point out that the one that I was proposing is a research committee, not a building committee. So it's a little bit more of an appropriate name to start with what we're trying to accomplish. I laid down a lot of things in the version that I said, which clearly outlines that this is, it's an, it's an informational rubric to fill out. And there was a, an extra option here, which was thinking about maybe even a K through, or a pre-K, should be pre-K through five school, as an option. Because I think one of these things that we have in front of us, to Al's point, is if there's no numbers or metrics, I was thinking time might be the dictator of that. There might be a 10-year solution, get through some of our financial responsibilities that we have, which is the tax cliff that we're currently running into. And then maybe one of these options would boil up as a much better option for 10 or so, 15 or so years from now, when Finn would be at the point of a natural renovation cycle, or a natural update cycle. So I wanted to make sure that we thought about that as well, because that would get us away from a massive spend today and push it off a little bit to let us build up our financial opportunities and stabilize Neary in that meantime, which could also benefit us long-term if we wanted to look at using that building for something else. So some of that's in this write-up that I, I put together. I also specified in here the comparison matrix pieces that you simplified in the other charge. I think we need to bring back a number of those and have those be things that are on the spreadsheet that are front and center, side-by-side comparisons. And I, I did push back a little bit, because I thought September was a quick turnaround, so I did change this to October in this version. Still thinking that that's a quick turnaround. But there's a number of things in here, mainly around the idea of clarity that I brought, or I wrote into the revision I saw, that I think we should consider this as a starting point.
I had a question for you, Tim. With A, Trotter serves grades three to six, Woodward serves grades seven to eight. Was that arbitrary that you took three, six, and seven, eight? Because I'm thinking of the amount of renovation that would be necessary to change both of those schools would be humongous.
I, I agree with you, but that was an option brought forward at town meeting, that somebody specifically said. I think that when you compare the cost of doing that one, it would probably be a gargantuan expense. Is it the best use? That's not for me to decide, I think that's for the town to see which one they have the appetite for. So putting them side by side, letting them get built out in a more robust way. I also put in here annotations in this one. If anything that we do, I, I want to see where it's being annotated from, what study, what timeframe, when did we do it? Is it inflation? Is inflation considered for the cost, because we looked at it before? We need this thing to be factual and supported. And that's really what I, I see this next chunk of time, and what we need to do with this charge.
I think also, to add to that, ultimately, the decision about how the schools are configured belongs to the school committee and the educators to decide what they can live with and will find the most efficient. So in a funny way, I can look at A and say, that's kind of a wild and woolly option compared to some of the others. And maybe gathering a bunch of, you know, everybody just think outside the box, you've got 30 different things you could do, and then show it to the school, the educators, and say, okay, can you narrow these down to what isn't completely out of the picture? So that you could listen to what everybody, just think crazy, everybody, what do you have? And then let the education experts take it and say, maybe, 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 maybe. And then cost it out, so that you don't waste time costing out something that ultimately, the superintendent of schools will say, there's no way you can do that, it's against every law in the world, so just...
I mean, I, I see that, and I, I think there's a level that we should maybe before this becomes...
To winnow it down to...
Yeah, to whittle it down, but I also think that that was a thing that was mentioned. My knowledge of what that would require would be, science labs would have to move, you'd have to build those out at Woodward, you'd have to put some kind of auditorium into it, there's some level...
A bigger gym.
A bigger gym, you know, there's a cer- certain level of landlockedness there too. I mean, like, I think that there's reasons that this might be expensive. So maybe this is just an option that we don't go even deeper into from a cost standpoint. But I think that putting it on the table as an option today, at this point in time, we looked at it again, is worth some level of effort. Now, the question is what, what's the depth of effort? But I think it showing up on the rubric says we looked at all the options.
I am all for looking at whatever options are realistic, whatever they are. And it may be more than the A through F here, so you could change the chart to say...
The next paragraph does it.
For example, so you, I don't, I'm not trying to limit this committee to A through F. Whatever else they think is viable, they can look at. If they think that moving the middle school to Woodward is viable, they can look at it too. So I'm not trying to limit this, so these are just examples of ones that are obvious ones that should be looked at. So whatever they believe they should look at, it's fine. So you could say, not limited to, but for example, look at these, but not limited to.
But I wouldn't want to spend an equal amount of money costing out each one of them when there are some that are obviously gonna be non-starters ultimately, either from expense or educationally. See what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I would say then maybe...
Some ideas are better than others.
Maybe we put the guardrail in place, we already ran into the cost was too much. So if the number to the town would be estimated to be over $68 million to do something, then that automatically, that just gets crossed off this list, because we already had no support for that. So I think that maybe that's the guardrail, but I don't think we put a lot more than that into a guardrail. Or maybe we pick a number less, 50 million, because if we had an option that was already expensive.
Well, Al's brought up a practical problem. So we approved $950,000 in May of '22 to do the feasibility study. That is all spent except for about $15,000. So to, so we had three separate cost estimates done towards the end, August of '24, then two in February '25. Those were outside estimators, and that's all they do for living. So it wasn't their architect, they were subcontracted out, and I think those were like $30,000, $35,000 each. So if we're going to have all these options and ask this committee to basically quantify these, we're gonna have to also figure out where they're gonna get the money to do this. Because just doing a per-square-foot thing won't satisfy what we're trying to do here. That's what we did in May of 2024, which showed that, you know, renovation costs more than new, and base repair was a lot of money. And so therefore, why would you do that when you can get a brand-new school? So you'd end up with a very subjective group of numbers if we don't find a way to actually come up with numbers here.
So I guess the issue would be needing somebody in, in addition to, to being able to hire somebody in construction who could think creatively about how to solve the problem of what to do with the two grades that were at Neary at this point. But I also think you have to factor in the amount of disruption to students. If you're gonna switch everybody in all three schools, that's a different thing than if you're just gonna move one group of kids out of one school for a couple of years.
That'd be a factor they would look at.
That's huge, because that's gonna be very expensive too. So that's, that's another part of cost, right?
So, okay, I see kind of two things we could do with this structure. We could try to continue, maybe we should open up to public comment at this point. And then at the end, see if we can try to tie together these threads. And I don't know whether it's something that can be done tonight, or whether, I mean, we would need one document to try to work off of, if we were gonna try to get this done.
Yeah, I agree, two competing documents. So, Tim, can you take this and make it what you want it to be, or is it just too far? I haven't read yours, I don't know exactly what it says.
I would say, what I did was I took what was sent out, and I just went through it, and I made it, made sure that there, all the things were factual, that the rubric was specifically mentioned, and that pretty much just the charge is to be a fact-finding mission. And that was what it was, and that everything's annotated throughout. So it'd be harder for me to go backwards than I think for us to leap into that and say, what was in the original that we missed now? Because I did take out the five-year, 10-year window in the 20-year piece. So like, if we, I took out those timeframes, because I don't know if those are really true. And I didn't want to put them into here, because as part of this charge, you'd fill that in, the rubric. So I didn't think it needed to be in the charge. Because it's already, say, fill in this rubric, what's the life expectancy, and there's a life expectancy area.
Well, part of that, I think, was that if you look at all the school buildings, some of them are older than others, and some of them are, are predicted to fail at a certain point. So some of them will be lasting 20 years, some of them, like one part of Finn, is gonna need help within 15, right? So that what I would really like to see is a 20-year plan for all the school buildings. Who's gonna need what, where, and how can we make decisions about what to do now, given 20 years out, right? So we don't, I think what, what happened with, with the schools is Woodward, Trotter, and Finn's repair were all done at the same time, and they're all gonna reach a point where they're gonna need help at the same time. So I think it would be really nice, 20 years going forward, to have a rough idea of which school is gonna need what. You see what I mean, as part of the rubric?
Does that exist already in capital projections? Yeah, so I, I think that work is something...
The capital plan typically goes out 10.
Yeah, but they, they, you may remember a statement that was made by the Neary Building Committee, which is, if that project had been approved, we thought we'd take care of all of the school projects for 25 years, other than normal stuff, roofs, et cetera, repairs, but nothing big. So we thought 25 years is the next time you'd have to do it. So Al, do you have a number in your mind as far as what you think the budget should be?
You won't like it.
Well, no.
I think that if we were going to focus on, I'm gonna call it the five-to-10-year, keep Neary safe, and by the way, Neary today is safe. Neary today is not falling down, it's got issues, lots of issues. That number would be on the order of $10 million. If we were going to go to something more substantial in terms of a reconfiguration, which would now be sort of the, I'm gonna call it the 20-year plan, I think we would be looking at a number that was on the order of 25 million.
So you would spend 10 to go for how long, keep Neary alive for 10 years?
Up to, yeah, yes.
And then if you wanted to keep it, if you want to do something now that would last longer, you'd go 25?
Something like that, 25, for example, is a, very roughly, a $300 tax increase. And then, I think there is a substantial reason to give serious consideration to the three-school option if you believe that some level of operational savings are real. I believe some level of operational savings are real. And, you know, the, again, the rubric is that if you could save a million dollars in operational savings, that would be sufficient savings to support about $15 million worth of bonding without raising taxes.
If you took a present value of a million dollars for, forever, and, you know, remember that number goes up, the bond stays the same, so that difference, so you end up with a number that's probably greater than the cost of what you're doing, right?
Yeah, yes, if you believe the savings are real, and that's, that, that's, that's a, a, a big if. But, you know, that would be the sort of level that I think is something you could sell at the town meeting, I think it is something you could sell to the voters. We're not, it's not gonna be free, you know, whatever we do, you know, we're gonna spend money. And I think that what we need to do is sort out the leading two, somewhere between two and four options. And by the way, there's at least one option that isn't up there, which is to move to neighborhood schools, which would then, which is common in the Commonwealth. And in fact, it's the most common elementary configuration in the Commonwealth. And the advantage of a neighborhood schools is, is that you can essentially right-size the area you draw from to match the capacity of the schools, which gives you some more flexibility. the area you draw from to match the capacity of the schools, which gives you some more flexibility. But, you know, I think if we go to three schools, we are going to have to do something. If it's, we go to Trotter. If we, we move five into Trotter, we're going to have to reconfigure Trotter so that it works in that environment. And that's going to cost money. If we decide instead we're going to expand Finn, we probably have to add some, some, some space there. And we have to potentially deal with Mooney and we have to sort out, if we don't have Niri as a school, what do we do with that building? I think the, the two obvious candidates are you knock it down or you spend a whole bunch of money to, to deal with it. And even knocking it down is not going to be cheap. You know, the, the old estimate was, I think, six million dollars for site work.
Yeah, I think it's, it's probably nine.
It was two and a half.
No, not to get rid of all the spesses and stuff that you've got in there.
Well, I was, yeah, the numbers.
You know, uh.
But it, it would definitely cost more money to renovate Niri for a town building than it would to spend Finn. So that was one thing that influences too, as far as that goes. Okay, so I'm still trying to, to flush this out. Okay, so two different budgets, ten and twenty-five, depending on whether you go ten years or beyond, right?
Yeah.
You heard me say a few times, I did this for five years. I really did it for twelve years because we did this in thirteen too. In thirteen, there were also a lot of savings that were identified. So the savings are real when you consolidate. There are duplicate positions that would go, there are things that you can eliminate. So the savings are real and that number can mean something when you truly look at it over a period of time. So I, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to support what you're proposing as far as budget as long as, as long as we end up with a process that does allow several choices here to be flushed out cost-wise. And then you can say, we can say, you know, but we do want you, these are the budgets we want you to work with. And either they can come back within their budget or they can't.
Well, you, you tell us what you can accomplish with the budgets that are available.
How about this? How about we open up the public comment? And then we take it from there. So there's a lot of people online and there's a couple of people here. I don't know if anyone would like to offer comments on what, anything you've heard so far? Okay, here's the hand up. Kelly Conklin and Kate Haranis. Is anyone in the room want to speak? Okay. Guess we'll give a little preference to the room first.
You know, thi- this, Jean Carmelak, twenty-nine Wildwood Drive. This is a real important issue for the town. And going through the special town meeting and participating in meetings and observing meetings on Zoom, the one thing that came out that I haven't heard a lot of discussion about is the preschool program at Finn and what the implications of Northborough not being serviced at Finn. I, I go to, you know, when I started going to meetings and stuff, the, there was always a discussion about, we started out with sixteen or fifteen different options and we whittled it down to four. And then the report that was done that looked at the school configuration made it clear that fifth grade could be at Trotter. I know there's a lot of discussion about the educational philosophy of doing that. But if you look at what is happening around the Commonwealth, there are many schools, many towns that utilize a five-through-eight configuration or a K-through-eight configuration. At the town meeting, when I mentioned that, the assistant superintendent got up and said that while the, the, the configuration of, is K-through-eight and the five-through-eight configuration that I mentioned was a school that was recently built and was designed to accommodate the, the separation of students. It, it's a, it's a philosophical issue. It's not a space issue. And what we're dealing with, I believe, is a space issue. So I think we have to eliminate the philo- philosophical implications of our grade configuration and look at it from what it is that the town needs. Going to Finn, if you eliminate half of the preschool program there, the document that was used to look at the grade-level configuration said that if we were to put pre-K through second grade at Finn, they needed thirty-two classrooms and they only had thirty classrooms available. But what are the implications of eliminating half of the preschool program there? I'm, I'm almost positive that they use between more than ten classrooms in the preschool program. So if there is space there, why are we looking at moving the, the school that is really specifically designed for our youngest children? Why are we eliminating that school from the options that we're looking at that, that are being presented?
I don't see why you think we are. It's right here. So move fifth grade to Trotter and move one grade to Finn.
So to be clear, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look in the packet of the draft charge. Have you had a chance to look at it?
I didn't.
Okay, so that's the key. This is, what we are discussing here is, instead of having the Niri Building Committee continue what they were doing, there would be a redefined mission, which would be, okay, town meeting voted down the proposal. We heard a lot of different options talked about. We don't have information on what those things cost. So for example, I know in your presentation, you know, you showed a configuration of you move the grades around. So what, one of the defined purposes of this new committee would be to find out what would be involved in that? Okay, would there be any additions to the buildings required? How, what would those be? How much would those cost? And to Tim's point about making this kind of a factual exercise, that would be kind of the mission of this committee, is just to collate the information and then not even necessarily to make a recommendation about which one is the right one, but to, through a series of public forums and maybe a non-binding vote at a fall town meeting, to present that information to the public, the community, and then say, hey, tell us, what do you think? Because what we're trying to do here is, you know, we heard, no, we didn't like Plan A and then we heard about a bunch of different options. Help us find out of, of those different options that have been talking about, including the one that you talked about, what enjoys, what is one the community can kind of get together? And I mean, to your point about the philosophical, and I don't know if that, by, by that you meant like the educational implications of that? I think that has to be part of discussion. I mean, I know for, you know, the, you gotta, you gotta hear from the people who are going to actually work in the building, including the teachers, about whether this is something they think is a good idea.
But Jean, you hadn't read this. It's, it's here. Your, your option is right here. Add one grade to Finn and add one grade to Trotter. It's, it's number C.
Do you want to borrow mine and look at it?
And I know you think that we can fit the grade in Finn without doing anything. It may be right, but the school group doesn't. That's why we had to add two modular classrooms to the Plan A for the two years and spend a million dollars each year at Woodward in there. So maybe you're right, but for some reason, and I, you know, let's not get into whether you're exactly right, exactly wrong, but they'll look at that. But your, your option's right here because this is the one that seemed to get the most traction as far as the alternative options. So this one has to be looked at.
No, I'm serious. Look at this and then, then tell us what, what you think.
Okay.
Okay. You know, the other thing too, that it seems to be dead at this point, but there was a time too when we thought we were going to end up with universal pre-K. And so they were trying to make sure we're going to have enough room for that. I don't hear anybody talking about that right now.
So Jean, do you know the, like, the packet? You know how to get the packet for the meetings or?
Yes.
Okay, because it's in the packet, so.
But it went in today.
No, it went in yesterday.
It went in yesterday.
I printed out, I'm on my own bench for a moment.
Okay.
I want to hear what you think about this one.
Yes.
Beth Woodcoff, Three Skylar Drive. I came here tonight to volunteer, to volunteer to be on the, whatever committee you form. If you recall from town meeting, I was a middle school principal for twenty years, served on the regional school committee for Algonquin for sixteen, local school committee for six, and I now work for the principal state organization and I work with principals who are currently in their positions. I shared with Greg my concerns before the town meeting and then I wrote Greg and the other superintendents a private letter. But when you talk about philosophy of fifth grade not being in eighth grade, it's really not necessarily a philosophy. And if you, and I wouldn't expect anyone to be enmeshed in the kinds of readings that I, you know, engaged in as a middle school principal. But the research around school culture and climate is far more compelling than the research around grade configuration. So it's not inappropriate for fifth grade to be at Trotter at all. And they don't have to stay in self-contained classrooms. There are all kinds of things that can be done to accommodate them. And my last principalship was at a K-to-eight building that we shared the same physical space. And eighth graders tutored kindergartners, they tutored fifth graders. You can make, not all eighth graders are scary and intimidating. The, you know, whole spectrum of development. So that argument I found to also be very, very weak, that eighth graders shouldn't be on a bus with fifth graders. So I just want to, again, volunteer my time. I thought my days of being involved on local boards were over, but I feel very strongly about this. I didn't necessarily vote no because of the cost. I voted no because of the reasons that were given educationally as to why we had to have this building this particular way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Betsy Rosebloom, Five Strawberry Hill Road. One, hire her. Two, I also wanted to echo that I heard people saying it wasn't just about cost, that they didn't know if the cost, they didn't feel comfortable from the totality of circumstances that that was money that we had to spend because they either didn't believe in the vision or the reasons or for a number of other reasons. But I wouldn't assume if I were you, I have no idea, no way to know how many people, if they felt that the communication was better, if they felt they were heard, if they felt things had been vetted a different way, might agree to vote that amount of money. I just don't think enough people were convinced of that. And thirdly, I'm confused, which is usually a theme when I stand up at the microphone. Is this something you all, first of all, thank you, Mr. Dannington and whoever participated. And I do want to thank the two members of the board who reached out to talk to me and missed getting home because I was still talking an hour and a half later about my reasons and my thinking on this project. Is this something you all would hope to wrap? It's a two-part question. Costing out other options, wherever you land, if it's six or eight or nine or whatever the charge is. Is this something you would hope to wrap in the next ninety days? You're going to vet. Then if so, if not, I assume this is something that you don't anticipate being done in the next ninety days. Then please explain to me why we're still talking about the MSBA. I know we don't want to give up thirty-five million dollars, but I'm hearing everybody on this board is generally in agreement that we have to look at other options, cost them out, talk to the town, present other options. Realistically, that cannot be done with, in the hundred-and-twenty-eight-day window, so.
But you can ask for an extension and most failed school projects have done that and they receive them. So if you wanted to, you could ask for an extension. So do I think it's going to be done by August thirty-first, given, we're talking summer and summer schedules? No, but you could ask for an extension.
And, and what types, what are we talking about in terms of an extension? Thirty, sixty, ninety, a year and a half?
Not a year and a half. So more toward the former than the latter for sure. There's been, there's actually been very few failed projects recently, so call it six or seven. And I believe almost every one of them asked for an extension and I think they got it. So we're talking months, definitely not years. And it's not twelve, eleven months. It's probably two, three, four, something like that.
So the MS, with the idea that we could ask for an extension, maybe up to and including December thirty-first to twenty-twenty-five? That sound like an outer limit to you? The end of the year maybe?
I've never done this before, Betsy, so I, it doesn't sound, it sounds like that might be an outer limit, if there is a limit. MSBA wants to use their money. They've got this money, they don't want to keep it tied up. If we're not going to use it, they want to put it someplace else. They got lots of projects that are on the table.
Can we ask them? Hey, what's the longest? Because I don't feel comfortable. I hear a lot of wonderful things and then I hear MSBA. And I feel like people have not given up on the big, beautiful school that two-thirds of the people at town meetings said is not an option for us. So I just, and I know you all said at the last meeting you were humbled, but I, I want to make sure you really heard that and I.
We heard that last time, but tonight, we're trying to figure out what this committee is going to look like. So that's what we're trying to get comment for.
But nobody's saying we've given up on the failed proposal is the bottom line. You haven't given up. Some people are holding that in their hearts and in abeyance and thinking that perhaps within whatever amount of time, the MSBA is going to allow us to extend that we're going to convince two-thirds of the people to vote for that. Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct. I think that at this point, the thinking is since there is time, there's no reason to tell the MSBA, we don't want the money. Just put it to the side and let's get this committee going, let's look at all the options and let's weigh them and see how the other ones look compared to that one and then you make a decision. So I don't think that there is, I don't, I don't think the way you characterize that is correct. It's on here, it's number F.
Yeah, it's on there. It's still on there and I'm hearing that legally, I, I'm not making the point, but get out there and talk to people. People voted this proposal down and they're, they are disturbed that it isn't going away. That's all I'll say.
Well, actually, go ahead, Al.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the board take the position that we will not ask for an extension from the MSBA.
Well, I would first like to complete public comment and then we'll go to your motion.
Thank you.
Can we try to get comments to talk about the charge here so we can try to see if we can do this?
I promise I will. Mary Tinty, to General Henry Knox Road. As for the charge here, I just want to re-articulate something that I believe Marguerite led with early on here, which is even though the numbers are critically important and the structure and the space is obviously a consideration, my fear in a lot of this conversation is that the educational piece is kind of taking a backseat to both of those. And I think it should be the driver and not the, the thing that comes as a tangent or as an afterthought. So I want the charge of the building committee or the research committee to make sure that the decisions are being made for educational excellence first and then seeing how that distribution works over perhaps a twenty-year outlook within our existing buildings and how, how the money flows from that. And because, again, everyone's going to get sick of me saying that I have a second grader. I'll, I'll say, I have a rising third grader. I'll change the language. I have a rising third grader who has had nothing short of magical, extremely special, beneficial, wonderful experiences at the schools she's attended so far. Those schools in Southborough are Finn and Woodward. There is a really incredible alchemy that happens in those buildings with those teachers, with that entire population of students that's there. I am not an educator. I'm an art historian, I'm a museum curator, and I am a school parent volunteer extraordinaire. So while I'm not a teacher, I am in those buildings constantly and I see a lot. And those buildings, those educators, the way they teach is remarkable. And I don't want us to hinder that in any way because of the decisions that we are making about space. So Jean, I just want to push back a little bit on the, the discussion about philosophy versus. versus space, in that, and, and Beth, you've spoken eloquently about what 5th through 8th grade spaces can look like. And so, again, I'm comforted to see that nothing is off the table here, but I want to make sure that as we move forward with looking at all of those options, there is a real robust debate that's going to happen within whatever committee gets formed, and that that debate has flushes out all of these different issues, so that the next time these configurations come in front of us, nobody is questioning how this is going to affect our students, and that we are convinced as a town that we are privileging and prioritizing what's best for them, as we also do what's best for our, our community at large. So those are just two points I wanted to make about my hopes for the dialogue that will happen within the committee proper, so that when we get to a larger town vote, those representatives can be much more explicit about what that discussion was, and the pros and cons, and why they landed the way that they did. So those would be a few of my suggestions. I also just want to circle back, because we've mentioned surveys, we've mentioned tiered rankings and votings, and just slight confession here, when this whole process started and some of those initial surveys went out about, oh, what's your ideal school configuration? Do you want to decrease the transitions? Do you want a 4-grade building, a 2-grade building? What should it look like? I didn't fill it out. I started to, I couldn't, because I wanted to know what the educators wanted. I believe in our curriculum, and, and I, again, like, I can only speak to the, the K through 2 experience so far, which I would extend just to K through 5, simply because that's the model we have, and that's what I'm expecting to continue to get to know for my daughter. But wit and wisdom, the language arts programs, Spanish language, the new math curriculum that I attended a workshop on that's going to be introduced next year, it's all fabulous. And again, I just want to make sure none of that gets sacrificed as we move forward. So I'm just flipping through my notes quickly here to just make sure there isn't anything about the charge. Oh, just that, just that, I, again, I'm operating with limited experience, because I've only been to grade 2 so far in Southborough, but, so the post-COVID experience is all I know, and I just want to make sure, because I've heard and I see, I mean, there, I think there's, there are differences, and I just also want those to get considered as part of the larger scope of things, and whether that, again, just falls to the robust debate that will happen on the committee, or whether there needs to be a separate meeting about this to flesh it all out, that's great. And then my last point, oh, sorry, my last point, sorry, is somebody mentioned, I think it was you, Andrew, early on, about when we bring this to town meeting, you know, perhaps there's another debate about it, perhaps there's, we're all ranking things. Town meeting this time around, and maybe this is a note, or maybe I should have coffee with the moderator, it was not a debate, and it wasn't even like a, a call and response. It was a series of people on, however they were intending to vote, or whatever the points they wanted to make, made those points, and then there was no option for any sort of context, clarification, or rebuttal. And I feel like that lack of back and forth is something that contributes to keeping people separate, and I feel like that's something we need to counteract a little bit more right now, as we move forward together to figure this out. So, okay, I'll stop, thank you.
All right, thanks. Yes?
Can I ask one question, if anybody happens to notice? Do the current buildings, Finn, Woodward, match the educational vision that was put forward in this new school, for the hallway sizing, for all the rest of the vision? Does anybody know the answer to that today?
It's a very, I don't understand the question, but...
So, as I understand it, the educational vision of this new building, and Mary had a good point there, and I'm wondering if she knew the answer to it, is that these hallways are larger, that you can move kids into, into different spaces to help with making the class subdivided, and different learning styles can meet different needs. Do any of our schools today meet that 100%? And, you know, what's NEARI not doing right now in the same sense, that I can understand, because we're talking about this because NEARI's needs repair? And I just want to understand if the rest of our schools are at that level, that we're at, that we want to get to, or if they're striving to get there.
Let me, let me do that one, being on the committee, because I know how this came together as far as what the inside looked like, right? So there was a lot of work done early on with a big group of people, parents, educators, that sat around and truly just white-boarded, they had a leader that knows a lot about this as far as how you teach kids best today, right? So this is today, what, what do we know today as far as how to design a new school? Schools, you know, we've heard a lot of complaints, why didn't you take care of NEARI, whatever? Schools last 50 years. You Google it, it's going to say, schools last 50 years. So things change, we don't have one room, classrooms anymore. So this school was designed with, we think is the best thinking. We went to other schools, we went to Acton, who just built a new school, to see what they had done, to truly try to design the interior so that we could teach kids better. We've got a lot of kids today that have extra needs, like these, it, it's a lot of money spent on that. And so this was designed to try to find spaces for that. It was tried to find spaces where kids aren't, they don't sit out in the hall when they need some extra help, it looks like they've done something wrong. So there was a whole lot of work, and I agree with Mary. That part of the process just did not seem to be focused on at all towards the end. You didn't hear people debating, well, this room, we, there was a lot of room spent on art, music, PE, right now, you know, it's a mess at, at NEARI as far as all three of those go. Things that we know help left brain, right brain, so there was a whole lot of thinking going in guided by a person at the architect's firm, that his whole business is to talk about how you educate kids best today. So there really was a lot of thinking, so whether, long answer to your short question, where the schools today do that? Not as well as what this was going to do, so I'll say that. As we know, we've got a great school system, we've got great teachers, so they make it work, but this would have given them more tools and a better environment to, to do that even better.
Yeah, I was just more curious about Mary's comment about how great it's been at Finn so far, and how, and it, does that building renovated in 2003, built and older than NEARI, does that meet the educational vision the school administration put forward? Or is it lacking in some kind of way that that building would need to be looked at as well to meet the true educational vision put forward? I think this is part of the charge of this committee, to kind of make sure we say the answers to some of those things, because that would dictate the 20-year spend, but it was just a question I had, because her glowing review of that school, knowing that we have two schools in the top 15 in the state, I just want to understand, like, our, today, as part of our charge, would people be falling off a cliff if NEARI simply got a new roof and some other things to keep going for a bit to buy some time? But that's for this committee, but that was my question, is, do the kids fall off a cliff when they go to NEARI? Or are the other schools pretty well set up to meet the educational vision today, or are they still somewhat off?
Okay, Eric?
Sure, Eric Laitzner, 9 Scholar Drive, excuse me. So I have sort of four main points, and some of it's going to be reinforcing themes you've already heard. That's one, I think, absolutely appreciate the factual approach to this, and what that leads me into my first point is, and now you said this, and I would ask the committee, or, so the board, to continue this, we need to stop with the narrative that the NEARI school is unsafe. If it is, I want my kids out of there tomorrow. I ask the question pointedly to the superintendent, the school is safe, it clearly has deficiencies, we all know those things, but there's nothing about that school is unsafe. And as sort of a loaded question, I called the, the building department to ask when the order to condemn the building was going to be posted. It doesn't exist, and I'm trying to be a little flippant, but really reinforce the point, because if you follow the social media channels, as well as the blog, there are people who may not be as close to this as we are, they are scared, and I believe some of you have probably talked to some of those folks about sending their kids to that school. So please, continue to reinforce that point, the school is safe. That gets to my next point, the timeline consideration. The MSBA thing I get, but the reality is, as we look at options, in my mind, it's really a timeline consideration if we want state money. We can take the money today, or we can look at other options that may offer money into the future. I agree, I don't think we should be beholden to a specific timeline just because of the money that's on the table today. That gets to my third point around doing the right work, and I think, Al, I listened to your point, I think you have to do a bottoms-up approach on this, and get a sense of what each option is costed, just so you can do sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. I think the opportunity for state money, if it's there, and I think, Kathy, you'll know this, a renovation can give you 36% reimbursement, right? That's on the SBA website, you get your, so there's options for money in the future, but I would just stress us, let's do the right work. Because that gets to my fourth point, which I think is very obvious, and we lived through this, if you can't get it approved, it doesn't matter, at the end of the day. You're going to do all this work, but it has to go through a community engagement process, which I think we all recognize. And then my last point I would say is, and this I think gets to the educational consideration that Mary hinted at, I asked superintendent, if NEARI were not in the shape it is today, would we even be talking about this? And I, and his answer was no, because it is a good school, the teachers like working there, clearly it has deficiencies. I appreciate that there can be improvements from an educational perspective, but if that school were not in such bad shape, much like the other schools that Tim had mentioned, because I asked him that same question, our schools serve the community, if they don't, then it's a much broader conversation about Trotter and Finn as well, because if it's not meeting the needs, then I, I agree with Tim, and we need to take a much broader viewpoint. So I have, thank you.
Okay, so I suggest that we've got like four or five hands raised, we listen to what those people say. I got to say, you know, I came in with an, I, my, my small brain just thinks, okay, draft charge, can we get this done tonight or not? How would we do that? And this is a discussion that's kind of just going all over the place, so we'll talk about what we do next after that, but, okay, Kelly? And also, I know you had the misfortune of calling on the people online second, and I kind of feel like that's because the people here are right in front of us, I want to appreciate that. But so if there's a point you've already heard before, you know, we're trying to, try not to be, is, you know, repetitive, if it's possible, thanks.
Hi, Kelly Conklin, 17, Sadie Hut. I just wanted to speak quickly on the idea of neighborhood schools. For context, I am a middle school teacher, I've taught in various districts across the state with different setups, some of which had neighborhood schools and elementary, and I just wanted to offer my own opinion on this idea. As a whole, I think it just increases inequity, because neighborhood schools tie your educational experience and your resource to where your family can afford to live, which means disparities in income, housing prices, neighborhood demographics, could possibly create some very uneven learning environments. Centralized schools help us distribute resources, our teachers and our support services more equitably. It reduces our flexibility and increases inefficiency, being able to move teachers between grades, or even have teachers loop with the grades, you know, let's say they did really well, one teacher in grade 1, they want to, you know, remain with that teacher in grade 2, that kind of thing. I also think student enrollment numbers fluctuate, which means for staffing, you can get yourself in a position where you have to lay off teachers in certain buildings because their enrollment numbers are down. It limits your program access, so students who need specialized programming, like special ed services, language, sport, that becomes harder to manage equitably, and you're having kids attend certain schools based on those resources. And I just think, as a whole, it, it's not long-term sustainability, and it fragments the community, we're at a time where, as of right now, we already feel very fragmented from this discussion. So that is just my two cents on neighborhood schools.
Thank you. Kate Heranis?
Hi, I'm Kate Heranis, 9 Orluk Drive, and specific to the topic of the charge, I just want to raise something I think we're at risk of missing in the conversation tonight around the charge for the revised committee, because there has been a lot of focus on what we can sell to voters. Even in the comments tonight, you can tell that, I, I think that's based on a lot of assumptions and conjecture, but if we're being real, I think a lot of that is actually code for how to appease the folks who turned out and voted no. And the total folks who turned out to vote were just a small percentage of the town's registered voters overall. So it wasn't a broadly representative process. And my concern about the charge that Mr. Fling proposes is that it's, it seems to be based on alternatives that were all proposed by folks who opposed the original plan, and the original plan was the one that had the support of our educators and administrators. So those parties weren't engaged in coming up with alternatives at the time, and so I think, you know, as Mary and others have pointed out, it is essential that when we're talking about school investment and a, a committee around school facilities, that educators should be at the center of it. And I'm concerned that the options that are laid out in the proposed updated charge are really not grounded in deep community engagement, but really a reaction to whoever spoke up and spoke the loudest on the opposition side. And I also just want to be very mindful, you can hear my little one, I'm not there in person because I'm juggling my small kids tonight, who are also very happy students of our school system, but the, just the fact framing, I think while it's important to be data-driven, also sounds to me like it could be used as code for focusing on dollars and square footage over more subjective measures like educational value, so I just want to be really mindful that the charge, I do see the stickers, but I want to be really mindful that the charge is reflective of both the hard numbers that can be line items, but also truly value-driven choices for the community. And I just think, you know, lastly, in response to the question that was raised about, you know, whether our other schools, whether Woodward and Finn, where again, my kids have also had exceptional experiences, live up to the vision. An analogy that came up for me is like, if my laptop is starting to fail, I'm not going to replace it with a model that I bought 20 years ago, even though I did great work on that laptop. I'm also not going to drop 10 grand on a supercomputer, but like, just because something works doesn't mean that if we're not, if we're investing, it's, I think, a really worthwhile conversation to talk about how we can upgrade in different ways, and where we can up-level, and not only meet today's needs, but meet the future needs as things are evolving. So again, I would just really encourage that any of the options in the committee's charge be grounded and vetted first by our educators and school administrators in this district, who are in it today, not 20 years ago, not pre-COVID, but really looking at what we need to succeed today and into the future.
Okay, thank you. So then, Kristen Lavalt, and then Katie Berry, have their hands raised?
All right, thank you. Andrew, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Kristen Lavalt, 12 Southwood Drive. This is all in relation to the charge, but kind of tying it back to your point to what was already said. First to Ms. Tinty and Heranis, and anyone who has kids that are coming into NEARI, I had a kid there not too long ago, and I can assure you, their experience continued to be great, as it was in their previous schools, they're both thriving now, and as Eric always said, already said, it's a safe building. I do think as a community, we need to be really careful what we're saying in front of our kids, because people are saying that kids are getting stressed out, well, we're doing that to them then, you know, because they're getting the idea of hearing us talking, but it's not safe. So I think it's on all of us and all of the parents to not maybe put the fear of God into our kids going to NEARI, because it is a safe building, and it's a wonderful experience. I also want to agree with Mr. Carmelak that this can get overly philosophical. For example, I could debate that if educational excellence is the number one, which obviously it is, but cost has to be as well, then maybe our funds are better spent on teachers, or programs, or mental health. So my ask for the charges, as we're understanding, like, how are we doing in other areas? Are we cutting staffing this year? I've had heard that a couple of people, for example, at Trotter, or, excuse me, Woodward might not be returning, running some of kind of the more mental health-related programs, I just heard that, I don't know if that's that. But I think that's an important point, like, we, we're talking about educational excellence, is it the building, or is it our teachers, or is it our programs? And I'm just saying, how are we doing in those other areas? Because that may influence how people want to spend our money. My next point, just, and Al and Betsy, thank you so much, I totally agree with you, and based on the comment last made, it sounds like people are still thinking we should be going after those MSBA funds. And I'm, I agree with you wholeheartedly, the frustration with town meeting government, been in it for years, with young kids, and by the way, with teenagers, you're still going to be juggling, it's just a different kind of juggling, so that's why I'm also on the phone tonight. So that's why I'm also on the phone tonight. That's off the table. Like, our town meeting government turned that down, and I agree with Betsy wholeheartedly and Al's motion that he's going to put on the table that we need to move on. And then lastly, to Betsy's point and others, it's not just about cost. And as Mr. Fling pointed out, the previous speaker pointed out, Finn is in really great shape. We do need to consider, and I don't know how to do this, it might be an independent Realtor, for example, that I bought my house because of its proximity to Finn. I very much may not have. It was a big selling point. So while it may help certain property values, it may actually impact others. And while I appreciate other people in other areas of town aren't going to worry about my property value, and I understand that, I think it's important for voters closer on the south side of town to understand that aspect. So I'd like, to the points made, it's not just about a cost. So it's expanding, obviously, what we're asking this committee to do. It's a lot, and that's another reason not to try to be pushing something forward for fall in hopes of getting the MSBA funding. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Katie?
Hi, thank you. I'm Katie Berry at 23 Richards Road. I'm going to be super quick because I talked to all of you, and I appreciate the time that we had. I feel heard, sent you an email. As far as the charge goes, I feel like the conversation of if the four-grade school stays on, I would like to have people really, really look at those numbers, because the chart that was sent around on social media and that was in my inbox twice a week, I just couldn't get behind. It's not the way that I make financial decisions. And I think, though super educated and well-intentioned, there were a lot of liberties in there, which is why I did not have a lot of confidence that those numbers, that my tax bill was going to be so small compared to the rest of the cliff that we're hanging off of. So if this stays on, I would like to have another analysis from maybe a different perspective, because though it was branded as flat as facts, it was estimates and interpretations of all kinds of just different scenarios. And I would like to have a more risk-driven one as well, to see what the risks are, right? Everyone's worried about the landfill and things like that. And I really feel those need to be realistically looked at. I know we don't have a lot of money, but I don't think the money that we already spent has been wasted, even though it's a no. Now we know what we don't want. So I would like to see that on the charge if the four-grade building stays on. Thank you.
Okay. So then Andrea and then Becca, and then I'd like to just close the public comment and we'll talk among the board.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Andrea Hamilton, 119 Northborough Road. So just thinking about the charge, one thing that I'd like to make sure is on there is more detail about the operational savings. I know Kathy mentioned that, yes, there are savings there. I will say, there is a list that went into the number that was presented, I think, coming off of what Kate said. I think that's where some of the sort of questions, to me at least, came up about that final number. I know there is a list of operational savings. I have gone through that list with a pretty fine-tooth comb, and I will tell you, I do not see it. I think that what we are actually talking about, for the most part, is programming cuts. And I don't think that is what people think they are being sold. I have reached out to the NEARI Building Committee and asked questions. I have reached out to our superintendent and asked questions about it. I have not gotten clear answers. And so again, when I, when I look at the numbers that were presented there for this enormous number, right? So we were talking about the same amount of money back in operational savings as we were talking about in the entirety of the MSBA reimbursement. Those numbers don't add up to me, and I would be happy to go through them with anybody. I mean, I will look at them with you, we can talk them through. But as of right now, I don't think those numbers are real. And so I would like to see any charge include a real detailed analysis. If you're going to tell me that we are going to save 30% of the annual cost every year from operational savings, those need to be locked tight. So that's something I would like to see included. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And then finally, Becca?
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Becca Dentee, 48 Oregon Road. I'm going to keep mine really short as well, because I know we're trying to move on. One, I think we need to keep, I feel strongly that we keep the MSBA option on the table. I know that there are loud opinions that have been on this meeting and in the town meeting, the special town meeting, saying that, you know, loud and clear, we heard a no. I don't agree with the sentiment that that was loud and clear. A small percentage of the town showed up to vote, and only a percentage of those people voted no. There are, I think there needs to be more education and outreach to the community with whatever gets proposed next, but I don't feel like there was a mandated no or a resounding no, that it should be completely eliminated, when we don't have to. There's no, there's no reason to give MSBA an answer if we don't have to. We can wait until we know that there is a resounding no. I don't think we've gotten a resounding no yet. So I believe it was Kristin's point about, is it the teachers? Is it the building? Is it the programming? I agree that it is the teachers and the programming, but some of these proposed alternative options would change the programming and would shuffle around our teachers. So while it's not physically about the building and the facilities, it is about where those teachers are placed, where those grades are placed, and what lessons and instruction and methodology we are using to teach them. And so by moving to any other model, we will disrupt the teachers and the programming. It's not just about the physical schools. And finally, as someone who lives just over a mile from the Finn school, I hear people loud and clear that they want a school in their neighborhood, but I would welcome an alternative. I remember first hearing about this project, I was really bummed that there was going to be no more school on my side of town, but thinking about what that building could be used for alternatively, I would welcome other options in that building, a rec center, a building that is for physical use by the residents of this town. And I don't think the impact of a school leaving the south side is something that could financially, in any large, meaningful way, change the value of homes on this side of town. We also don't live in a very large town. Southside, northside, we're all only a couple of miles from each other. So I don't think it matters that much, losing a school on this side of town. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks. All right. So in terms of where we go from here, you know, at the beginning, I thought we could try to work out a charge in 45 minutes, and that, I think that's not going to happen. So, you know, one option I see, I mean, do people still feel like we should keep working on a charge for a new committee? Or, because one thought that I had is if, I mean, Tim, you and I could meet and try to merge the two documents into something.
I'm supportive of that.
And bring it back on the 17th?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I did make a motion.
Okay. What's your motion?
So my, my motion was that this board is not supportive of requesting an extension to the MSBA deadline.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Mr. Hamilton?
Oh.
I guess it's the state. All right, we can just raise our...
I'm, I'm...
All those in favor?
Can you rephrase again what we're voting on exactly?
To basically not allow a request for the extension of the MSBA 120 deadline. So it would mean August 31st would be it. Either we come forth with a positive vote by then, or we lose the money.
So...
All right. Then move the second to...
Are we going to debate, or are we just going to vote?
I don't need to debate.
I think we can vote. So all those in favor? Aye?
I have a question.
Yep.
Again, the optics of having the new four-grade school at NEARI site are in both of these charge drafts, right?
Yep.
It seems to me that the issue of voting, as Al is asking, is a question of not bringing NEARI back with no options except NEARI. Is that right, Al? Did you feel that there could be an end run of some kind, that people would bring the same thing back and have it voted on again?
So I am the one person on this board, and Tim, you get a pass on this, that opposed this project. Town meeting, as we all know, voted overwhelmingly against this project. And it is hanging over this board that people believe that we're going to bring this back, and that it's going to come back, and that this board, I think, by doing this, is thumbing its nose at the voters at the town meeting. Sorry, that's how I feel, and you may not like it, but that's how I feel, and that's how people have been talking to me feel. And you've heard it here in several cases, you've heard it from people who rarely ever agree with me. And I think this board needs, and I think this board has credibility problems after the last election. And there was a referendum on the board as well as on the school, and this board is going to have to go to town meeting and ask for a number of things in the fall and a number of things in the spring. And I think we should be definitive in saying we heard what the voters said. And so that is my reason for bringing this. If, you know, it's not the first time I've gone down four to one, went down four to one on the school.
Okay. So can I just do a slight pro and con on that? The pro to voting, as you said, would be that it's off the table, and then, in theory, people wouldn't have to worry about it anymore. The con in doing what you said is that we've closed the door on a possible option later on, minuscule chance, that everyone would look at all the options and say, oh, wow, that really is, it would be a very, very, like, invisible, tiny chance, okay?
Right.
But what if all the costs, I mean, if we just hit the cost where we could compare them correctly, and we had the in-depth cost analysis we did with the final number, and we knew that all the other choices were a lot less than the $68 million cost to the town of Project A, okay, fine, but we don't have that. And so I just don't see why you say no to that. I don't agree with much of what Al just said. I hear the opposite. So there's no end around anybody's trying to do here. We're just trying to keep an option open that down the road, if you end up saying, if you put fifth grade at Trotter and another grade at Finn, that costs more than this, is that the better choice? So I don't know what the costs are going to be. I don't think we can do a project for Al's 10, maybe for the 25, but not for 10, to get what we want to get to for 10 years, but maybe we can. So, but until we have those numbers, why would we make a decision?
Well, this is the thing that's happened with me, because my first impulse was, okay, it's done. Tell the mass...
Building authority.
We're not going to do it, right? And then so many people that I respect say, why would you close it out when you don't need to? In business, you always leave it open until you don't need it anymore. I don't, I know, like, five people whose opinions I truly respect, whom I shall not name, have said, no, you don't close it out until you have to. And I'm thinking, oh, well, I'm not a businessperson. I don't know that. But enough people have mentioned it to me that it's making me wonder if the real issue is people are thinking that something will get sneaked by them.
That's exactly right.
Well, how, how would anyone do that?
There's multiple roads to this. And, look...
I mean, that's the issue, Harris.
I'm the only one who voted against this.
Can we, let's, let's take the vote.
I don't want to...
I think we've, we've talked about this. Let's take the vote.
Can I just, I take great offense with this implication that this committee did something wrong and underhanded it sneakily. We worked hard to bring forth a project that, in the end, we thought was the best. You can disagree with that, which they did. But the idea that we did something underhanded and whatever, and we lost credibility, is just, I'm sorry, I just...
I tend to agree with you, but look...
My gosh, how could, I mean, if you...
Let's, you've made, there's been a motion, it's been seconded. So all those in favor? And all those opposed? And I'll just say, from my standpoint, I think Marguerite pretty much articulated the reasons why I voted the way I did. Most practical, I think the practical thing we have been trying to do is to work on this new charge and have a new committee, just so we start building up that committee so we can hear from them. But I, you know, I just don't agree with a lot of the premises you make, and the concrete step that the board would need to take in order to bring back the Plan A would be to organize a special town meeting within the next 180, 20 days. And I have no interest in doing that.
Plan A is not coming back by itself. I mean, this is, whoever's worried about that...
Ultimately, ultimately, town meeting decides. What we're trying to do is instead of have a process where there's one option presented, the whole name of the Plan B was because there was, there was only one option. I think I've heard a lot of people say, I just want to, I just want to get more information and just fill in the kind of matrix that Tim was talking about. So...
And the cost was shocking.
So now that we've had that vote in terms of what we do next, do we want to do what we had just talked about, about Tim and I meet and try to hammer out some camel out of this?
You can do it. I'll just put in my opinion, 11 people is too many.
That's probably true.
All right. So you decide whether you think it's seven or nine. Make it odd.
All right. So...
And remember, Al would like to have a budget constraint here, so consider that too.
Okay. All right. I think the next item, Chief Puntini, I'm sorry, has waited to talk about the Junior Fire Fighter Academy and...
He is very patient.
So thanks for having me here tonight on the agenda. And in your packet was a draft Hold Harmless Agreement for a potential junior firefighter program. It's something I talked, I believe, at length in my initial interviews. And if I look back, one of the things, if I look back on my career, and you asked me one of the things that I'm most proud of, it's the junior firefighter program that we brought into Foxborough. I started in 2009. From 2009 to 2024, we had 15 career hires out of there, as far south as Hyannis, as far north as Marlboro, a lot, obviously, in Foxborough itself. So it was just a fantastic picking ground for us, and we got a lot of recognition for it. There are some other communities that try to get out in the high schools and do EMT programs. They just have not seen the numbers that we saw out of just having an in-house junior firefighter program. There's two different directions we could have went with this, either an explorer program through the Boy Scouts of America, or kind of do our own thing as a junior firefighter program with our old Hold Harmless Agreement. Pros and cons to both, being that we are, you know, a public safety organization that already is, you know, responsible for our own core checks and professional responsibilities. I believe that kind of, you know, drives us towards the junior firefighter program instead. And just in the full scope of transparency, I just wanted to present it here if there's any questions with the board, any questions with the Hold Harmless Agreement that Mr. Talaman did review, be happy to answer.
Have you had, have you run it by a town council?
Yes. Yep, yep. They looked at it, and they were okay with the agreement.
Well, then I'm okay with it. I think it's great that you're doing this.
Yeah. It was, like you said, I have a couple firefighters who were very, you know, excited about the process, and I think it'll be great for them, it'll be great for the youth, and hopefully we'll actually, you know, see some potential career hires out of it in the future.
And I remember...
So you're just going to mimic your Foxborough program?
Essentially, yeah. And set it through the Boy Scouts, through our own junior platform. One of the highlights of the program was we actually, I think, four times, we took the kids out to the University of Illinois. They have a fire science technology program out there, and they have the State Fire Academy out of the university. And the kids were able to live in the college dorms over the summer and do four days of live, hands-on fire training that just isn't available around here. You talk to some of the career hires that Foxborough has, and they'll look back as that's one of their highlights of their career, being, you know, 16 years old, going out to Illinois and, you know, participating in the academy.
Is there any additional cost to the town for this, or is it all...
No, it's all, it's volunteerism. You know, if there was a cost, it'd be, it'd be miniscule, it'd be a T-shirt. But for the most part, the way we ran it in Foxborough was volunteerism and fundraising.
This is effectively a form of an apprenticeship.
Essentially. Yep. Yep. We, the goal would be to probably have one to two meetings a month at last between, you know, probably about an hour and a half, two hours, in a school over general firefighting topics, and try to get the youth interested and engaged, and then they'll have a mentor that, you know, somebody that says, yes, I want to be a firefighter, paramedic in the town of Southborough. You know, we can mentor these kids and say, these are the things you should do to achieve that. We had a couple hires, they were already paramedics with, you know, a little bit of We had a couple hires. They were already paramedics with, you know, a little bit of experience with the Fire Explorer Program, hiring them career at the age of 19. So, and it worked out great.
What's the difference between doing this on our own and doing it through the Explorer program?
The Explorer gives a bigger net, I guess, you know, they have their own kind of insurance platforms and programs, but also comes with the umbrella of the Boy Scouts of America. So some positive, some maybe not so positive. And there's also a whole different level of training that the advisors would have to go through, which I think that, you know, being, like I said, public safety professionals, it already held to our own code of conduct. You know, I think it just kind of duplicates that for, you know, firefighters that we're trying to get to volunteer to do this.
Yeah, they're, I've been a scout leader, and, you know, there certainly is a certain amount of youth protection.
Correct.
Training that you would go through with that. And I think it might also offer us an additional level of insurance protection.
It does. I mean, you know, it's a direction we can go. There's also a cost that comes with it. I know one of the things we did struggle fundraising to meet our dues on an annual basis with the Boy Scouts. So it was, you know, it was certainly a challenge. We were doing raffles and can drives and, you know, just try to meet that minimum, just try to meet that minimum payment. So.
I was just thinking, if you had a kid who had not been in scouts and they reached a certain age and they wanted to do this, if it were through the scouts only, would they be able to?
So actually, I'm glad you mentioned that. Scouts actually bring, so Scouts, the Explorer program is from 14 to your 21st birthday, which is, which actually posed a little bit of a challenge for us in the past, where we get youth that, you know, we weren't going to hire into the organization. They hit their 18th birthday. Normally, we would just kind of, you know, say, you know, you've outgrown the program, and this Boy Scouts would make us maintain them until their 21st birthday.
So you considered the two choices when you were in Foxborough and decided that this net, net, net was the better way to do it?
Originally, so originally with Foxborough, we went Explorer route because I think that was just kind of what we knew, what we're informed about. And then after living that for 15 years, you know, coming here and kind of being able to go in either direction, just my personal belief was I thought the junior platform would be a better platform instead of the Boy Scouts. So like I said, it does come with its pros, but it also, you know, it comes with.
Your call.
Yeah.
Like everything else.
So are you looking for a vote from us to?
Not necessarily a vote. I guess, unless you'd like to vote, I just wanted to make it aware, you guys aware of it. So if, you know, saw us on social media, or God forbid, this Hold Harmless did have to get exercised, just in the full, you know, spirit of transparency, it's not the first time you're hearing of it.
All right. How about this? I move that the board approve the fire chief's proposal for the junior firefighter program. All those in favor? All right, thanks.
Great.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
At least you got a vote by coming.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda is appointing our select board representative for the, these acronyms stand for. Metro West Regional Transportation Authority. And the MWRC is the Metro West Regional Collaborative. So our, our representative right now is Mr. Stivers, and he would like to continue in those roles. And he, the representative does not need to be a representative of the select board. And he's from, I don't think these are actually appointments with any limit or a term limit or anything.
They're not.
So I'm happy to continue that, and we'll just, you know, he can provide us some regular reports on what's going on with those. Does anyone have any concerns about that, or anyone want to?
I'm all in favor.
Okay.
Me too. He wants to do it.
All right. So I move that Sam Stivers continue to be the select board representative for MWRTA and the MWRC. And I don't think I need, even need to put any term limit on that, right?
He said there's no term limit.
Okay. So unless someone changes it?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Next item on the agenda are the board and committee appointments for fiscal year 2026. So you've got in your packet a color-coded list. So I'm going to call out a couple committees where I really do not think they should, I don't think we should vote on them for different reasons. One is the 21 Highland Future Use Committee, which has a, the charge of that committee expires on June 30th, 2025. So that's a separate discussion about whether that charge continues. And there's been no request to continue it.
And are they coming on the 17th to do their report?
That is a good question. Kristin, I think you're on the committee. Do you know the answer to that? I don't know if you, I see your hand up, but.
You know, yeah, my hand's raised for a public comment at the end. If that's on the agenda, I'm not sure.
Well, I just, I thought you were, sorry, a little unfair, but I don't know. Do you know what?
No, I, you'll be hearing from us in the next few days, but I can't give an update right now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
The Community Preservation Committee, we no longer, we do not appoint the.
Well, we appoint the at-large members, but not the ones that come from other.
Correct. So the at-large member, the only one whose term is then expiring is, actually, there aren't any. Because the two members whose terms expire on 6/30/25 are both representatives of the Rec Commission and the Historical Commission. So because of that town meeting vote recently, we don't appoint them anymore. And the NEARI School Building Committee, which we just talked about for a long time, that's a different animal. So then we're looking at the appointments to the Cable Television Committee, the Capital Improvement and Planning Committee, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, EDC, Golf Course Committee, Historical Commission, MTC, Open Space Preservation Committee, there's not any one up. The Pilot Committee, there, everyone expires on 6/30, so that we would be voting on them too. And then the.
Well, we know that that is Sam.
Yeah, we just appointed Sam. Mimi Lutrell is the planning board rep.
The planning board will do that one.
Okay. So then SPAC, Southborough Public Accessibility Committee, Scholarship Committee, Stewardship Committee, Trails Committee, Taxation Aid Committee, Tricentennial Committee. There's one person I'm just going to hold because on the Tricentennial Committee, which I'm on, Sandy Pochapin resigned from the committee some time ago, so we should fill a new person from that. So I don't think we should reappoint her for another year. And then finally, ZBA and Youth Commission. So the process we've usually followed is if anyone wants to hold any of these appointments, then we talk about it the next meeting, or else we just vote to reappoint all of them.
All that are in green.
Pardon me?
NEARI Building?
As I said, that's completely, yeah, we're not, I agree. That's not part of this vote.
Not tonight, right?
What?
We're going to talk two weeks from now about the charge for the, a different committee. So we're not voting on that. We're not voting to extend the terms of those as part of this vote. Does that make sense?
So it'll be a lot, those people will still be there till 6/30, and then hopefully we'll have a replacement done on 6/17. And then appoint.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Okay. So are there any holds to anyone here? Okay. Yep.
Just, I'm completely clear with what you just said. 21 Highland and NBC are not part of what you just said.
And this Community Preservation Commission.
And the Community Preservation Commission. And one name who's no longer involved, which is Sandy Pochapin.
Yes.
And then everything else is what we're talking about right now.
If their terms.
Are blue.
Are expiring at the end of this month.
Okay.
Do you want to not, do you want to not vote tonight on reappointing?
So is anyone you want to pull from this?
I don't, I don't have anybody to pull tonight, though. As long as the couple we already mentioned are there, which we are, we're good. I'm good.
Okay. So I move that the board reappoint. Do we need to make individual votes for?
Save everybody in blue.
I think as amended, we probably cover it.
Yeah.
We have a list of what you did.
Okay. And, and the intent of this vote is for whatever length of the term they have, we're appointing them to fill another term.
Yeah, and that's over here too, Andrew. So you got your term over here.
Oh, okay. Good. All right. So I move that the board reappoint, except Sandy Pochapin. All of the members of the committees referenced on this sheet, except the 21 Highland Future Use Committee, Community Preservation Committee, and NEARI School Building Committee, whose terms are expiring on June 30th, 2025, to appoint them for another full term.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. So then the two next related topics are, we have our goal-setting meeting on the 11th, which I think is a Wednesday, right? It's going, the start time is 5 o'clock. So another different start time, 5 o'clock. And, and it's at Public Safety. So this is, I know, Tim, you familiar with how we, what we've done in the past on this?
No.
Okay. So this is fairly new. Like, my first year on the board in 2021, we didn't do this. In 2022.
We did not do it.
We did not do it. There was a, something resembling this that we did, but it wasn't, this is to have like a retreat, except because it's the select board, it's not like a corporate retreat where you go and you go to Cape Cod or something like that.
You can't retreat.
Our retreat will be going to the Public Safety Building. It's a public meeting. So there's minutes and people can come, but we're not, it's not like this where we're sitting in this room and it's not going to be live broadcast. And it's for us to have, of the five of us, to talk about what do we want to do this year? And one, we used to, we had in 2022, we hired a consultant who came in and, you know, it was a pretty prescribed process where you got a spreadsheet and you had like four categories of the topics, like administrative and finance, planning and community development, something like that. And you, you filled in as many goals within each category, and it took a couple hours to fill out the form. And then he collated it and led a discussion that led to, you know, a document that says, kind of, this is what we want to do. And each, then after, for each goal, you break up a liaison to do on it. I found it a good exercise, but we've done it a little more casually the last couple of years of, what I have in mind is just like a little form that each person would fill out before. You know, breaking them into categories of kind of things that we think we could accomplish, like make a measurable accomplishment in some way in this year. It could be you bring it to a vote in the fall town meeting or the annual town meeting. Or, you know, you try to get a grant, you try to get some interim step there, like for, you know, wastewater study committee. You know, that's where it's kind of incremental progress. And then, you know, you list a couple goals, four or five, you think you would want to do this year. And then there's a couple that are more longer range. You, let's try to make progress on it to set up some progress for next year. And then we talk and we try to put together a consensus document, like, these are our goals for this year. And I would say our success rate's like 50/50.
It's hard to get the goals done.
Yeah. And that's, that doesn't mean, it's a, you know, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're a failure. It just shows, like, there are some goals that, there are things they just get lost in the threat, things they just lose momentum, like.
Or they truly just take longer than you thought.
So for ex, like, the Hopkinton Water one.
That was what I was about to say.
Where that should definitely be a continued, let's close it out.
And we met this week to say no. So do you want everybody to submit to Vanessa a list of things that might be considered so she can collate it ahead of time?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. So, and the idea is to get your thinking cap on. And we have a tricentennial committee meeting. Was that 7:30 or 7? All right. So we're going to try to keep it to two and a half hours, less than two and a half hours. I think we can do that. And we are going to have, I think, pizza or something like that. So. Does this sound like a plan?
I think it's useful.
Okay.
Well, I think it's very useful.
And then a, the next topic here is setting a tentative date for a fall special town meeting. If we, I know we've had some talk here about maybe the first week of November. In 2021, there was a fall town meeting on November 1st that was a successful meeting. I think the fall town meetings, we try to have focus more on, less on fiscal topics, more on if there's any zoning land use topics or other things like that. And try to keep it to, you know, no more than 10 articles.
So, can I interject?
Yes.
There could be something pretty significant on this zoning-wise.
Yeah, yeah.
You may recall in the spring, there was consideration of trying to get some zoning changes on Route 9 to be more accommodative to certain types of businesses. And planning board just didn't have time to deal with it. Roll forward now, we've got a really good reason to deal with that. There is significant activity in the, that area, a project that may come forth that will need some changes. Planning Board Chair has been involved in discussions, as has been Paul Sibelli because of his role in setting the tax, getting the tax classification hearing done. So the tentative thought was push it back as far as we can. So maybe the first week in November to give planning board as much time as they need to get this flushed out, do their public hearings, break it forward. If we need to do something money-wise, like I think Al thinks he may need some match for grants, whatever, you can still do that. You just appropriate free cash. It's been certified for 6/30/25. And that way you're not going to affect, so Paul Sibelli can go ahead and do his classification hearing the first week in October, which is what he likes. He was at the meeting. He was fine with that plan. But the more time that we give planning board, I think the better result we're going to be. And it's a pretty big deal as far as what's going on. So it's, so that's one thing for sure that I do believe is coming as far as the need for a special town, fall town meeting. There's other things too.
And we would, we would do this on a weekday night, right?
Monday?
Yeah, before, we've done it on a Monday.
21 was Monday.
I'm just, just looking to see if there's any statewide elections. I don't think there are.
It's an odd number, it's an odd-numbered year, right?
It's not an odd.
Okay. So like Monday the 3rd or Tuesday the 4th?
Well, Monday if it runs over, which won't, you'd have Tuesday.
So should we, I mean, this is really just penciling it in, right?
But it's a start, right? We at least got a, you know.
We pick a day and then we check it with Jim and Hegarty. So Monday, November, Jay Taller, Monday, November 3rd? Okay.
Yeah. Those two are important.
Okay. I don't think we have anything else. So we have one executive session item minutes. I move the board enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, not return open meeting to review and approve executive session minutes from April 25, 2025, exemption 7. So made the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, we got to do a roll call. Aye, Dennington.
Aye, Landry.
Aye.
Aye. Hamilton, aye.
Okay. We move to executive session.